Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, and this is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting at Gloucester High School at 32 Leslie Johnson Road. Consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted by oral participation. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press *9 to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there's a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. I will state that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful and engaged like law. And I ask that you stand. The mayor will likely not be attending at a conference. And Melissa, Sarah Prince is joining us on the screen. Okay, comments from the chair. I just want to announce that Gloucester High School, Class 2022, has their graduation this Sunday. The forecast looks great.
How did you know? I just checked it moments ago.
Excellent. And it's at 1:30 in the afternoon on the field. And so if the public wants to come and cheer on and celebrate all the accomplishments of these students, they are welcome to. It's a good time. We will move on to recognitions. Just continue just to say that the seniors had their prom last Friday night. It was my first promenade, which I don't know why I never went. But now that I had somebody in it, it was just a magical trip, I think, for the kids and for the people that attend. I understand why people go year after year whether that student doing it or not. Because you get to see everybody all dressed up and what the girls are wearing. Just a lot of fun, a lot of fun. Good activities for the end of year. Anything to add?
I don't know. I just echo that. It was a great night. We went to Georgetown, to Black Swan, for the evening after the promenade here in the Field House. We had some new folks running things for the promenade and kept up the high standards that we've had in the past. But it was really well attended. You know, it was really great to see so many people in there. Superintendent Lomas was particularly excited who was there afterwards by similar to you about attending the spectacle of it all. Other people, there were at least half a dozen other people for whom it was their first time as well. And they thought it was spectacular, right? All the, some pretty crazy outfits, really high, you know, creative stuff from the kids. And then we had a great night in Georgetown. That's a great and safe night. We started a new tradition this year where when, thanks to a donor at Rockport Mortgage, we have ice cream for the high school students when they got back here. So Officer Scola, our SRO, distributed ice cream to kids as they got off the limos and buses and so on. So it was like little kids out there after their prom night eating ice cream right out here out front. It was really a great way to end the evening.
I think I said it was a good day. We should do it every.
You did say that. That would be a little much, I guess.
Anybody else have any other recognition?
Yeah, two things. One is just on the prom. After the prom, I looked at all the pictures on Facebook and I said, obviously, the young ladies were wonderful and all that. But I said, the real difference is the guys. The guys just look really shocked. These kids know how to dress. They have style. I think the proms, I won't say. I went to the tux from Mr. Tux, you know, ruffles and a cummerbund of some sort. Looked terrible compared to these kids with the European cut suits and looking great. It's a long way from what we want to wear. So good on the boys. I know it's all, you know, the girls get chubbs on that. But the boys, I thought, look outstanding, so. The other acknowledgement for me was the elementary school band. Just to see that is phenomenal. People, young kids interested in music. The people behind that, the music educators. I believe the GEF has helped with that. So certainly worth seeing and it's really, really great to see.
I'd just like to second that on the elementary band. Jamie Klopotowski is the elementary band director with the support of a $65,000 grant from the Gloucester Ed Foundation to provide the instruction in the afternoon. A program has been, had tough time the last couple of years. And it was very important to rebuild the number of students coming into the middle school so that the Monday night elementary band concert, I think there are 40 kids from all five elementary schools in fourth grade and 40 in fifth grade. The energy was incredible. They really did a great job. And then Tuesday, last night, a number of us, Superintendent was there, Lynn was there for the eighth grade stage band and the.
All grades, all grades on the stage band.
Oh, sorry. The eighth grade lab, which was a group of students who maybe hadn't done, learned an instrument before or had taken a break, but really needed a lot of work. They were incredible. The vocals were terrific. It was just, it was a lot of fun. And then the stage band was afterward. And I think there are over 80 students involved.
Altogether, I think, we're about there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think over 80 students and there might have been, you know, near that, all packed onto that stage.
And Sunday night, we had the jazz band too.
Yeah.
So they had to split it because there were so many kids involved.
Yeah, so, you know, three days' worth of really great music. And I have to say Carlos Menezes. And I don't have the program in front of me because there's a long list of instructors and supporters, people who were there, you know, photographing and sound mixing. It's just, there were so many people who came together to make that. But the best thing about it all was the incredible energy. And they were just whooping and hollering and so happy to be in person. And the music was fantastic, really good.
I have a couple more. I wanted to give a shout out to Dawn Enos. If anybody is connected with Gloucester Sports at all, you know Dawn Enos, who takes pictures of almost every sport. She, I believe, that's all of the individual players and their team pictures. She helps create the banners for senior night. She is just everywhere. And this is all volunteer and the talent, the quality of her photos. I mean, if you ever tried to catch your kid in any action shot, it's nearly impossible. But she gets phenomenal photos. And then she'll post them all on Facebook. So, you know, depending upon the team, she's done she beach, varsity, as they say. She does practically every sport and all because she loves it. So I just wanted to give her a shout out because she is quite an asset to our schools in a volunteer way. And the other one I want to mention is winners of the Poetry Without Paper contest. They had many people submit from Gloucester Middle School, O'Malley Innovation Middle School and the high school. So the awards for first place went to Olivia Hogan Lopez from Gloucester High School, 12th grade. O'Malley Innovation Middle School winners are, first place was Emma Wilt, an eighth grader. Esme Saru, also an eighth grader. Alina Brown, a seventh grader. Then we have some elementary. We have Bianca Narosi. It was a fourth grader at Plum Cove. And Jack Britson, who is a second grader at West Parish. So it's nice that the community has these kids, you know, challenge themselves and submit, submit their work.
So tomorrow evening at the Soraya Free Library, the award winners and those students are all going to honor mention are being recognized at the Soraya Free, 6 o'clock tomorrow. Tomorrow's a busy night on a lot of levels. Plum Cove is also having their eighty kids performance. And Beaman is having their learning demonstration too. Poetry Without Paper, Folks at the Soraya Free.
Okay, so. I want to do recognition to people. Oral communications. My apologies if there's anybody attending who would like to speak under oral communications. You will have up to three minutes. And you must state your name and address for the record. And school committee chair will not allow, not allow thanks as to individual performance or character. I think I covered the gist of the rules of oral communication. So if there's anybody who is attending who would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Okay, seeing none, we move on to the consent agenda. If anybody has any items they would like to remove. Thanks for the motion to the group. All right, may we have a little follow up?
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Mason. Yeah, Jefferson, Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to deliberations on educational issues. First, we have an update on the CBTE program at Gloucester High School.
Thank you. If you could, yes. Sorry. No, no. Words were just about to come out of my mouth. Do you want to start? Sure, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to start talking about it. So it was really interesting in preparing this report to look back this, last year when I gave this report and how different things were. The emphasis last year was on how we emerge out of COVID year. What are the variations that we had to do over the course of the 2020-2021 year in order to keep programs going in that hybrid form? And then what we were looking ahead to do. And it was really great to look back on having done so many of the things that we said we would do last year. So that will be the focus of today. I will. So talk about each shop as well as the vocational program overall. And I will say a few things about bringing on a director of CBTE beginning July 1st, which is really, we've been working on throughout this year that we'd set up last year. So for folks who are, you know, new to these presentations, we currently have four Chapter 74 CBTE programs. These are, so we have other courses that we offer that are vocational in nature, but they're not fully developed Chapter 74 programs. Our four programs are advanced manufacturing, also called machine technology, automotive technology, carpentry technology, and electricity technology. I'll talk about each one in the presentation. So just some highlights, some things that have happened this year. Back in the fall, we had our NEAS accreditation visit, as you folks know. And our CBT programs were a key aspect of that visit because those programs exemplify our vision of the graduate, you know, in a more real clear way. And it's easy to show folks our CBT programs involve problem solving, communication, collaboration every day for our students. So it was one of the places that we showcased in our successful NEAS accreditation visit. In the fall, we also had our annual Perkins Grant approved. I'll talk a little bit more about how we used that this year. We, as you know, we were tasked this year with revising our admissions policy to be inclusive. And that's something that DESI required of all CBT programs. We continued with an open house here at the high school and course selection meetings that featured our CBTE programs. In April, we found out that we, for the second time, we got a three-year grant from Lion Wa through GEF, another $150,000 for the auto program. In the spring of 2022, we also were able to hire a CBTE director, Brenda Wasslech, who will begin July 1st. And that's through grant funding as well, through an anonymous donor that we worked, connected, got connected with through GEF as well. And in spring 2022, the admission policy was approved. And now, and we've used it. We've used the policy. And I'll say a little bit more about that as later slides. So that's a kind of an overview of the year. All right. I could jump. Here, there, yes. Thank you. So focusing on advanced manufacturing for a moment. Our sustainable improvements and innovations there. This year was our year of implementing the new computer lab in classroom. So we used Perkins funds last year to modernize our computer lab and advanced manufacturing classroom. One of the real practical things is students now have two monitors that allow them, they use one monitor to watch or read directions, the learning of something that they're then applying on the other screen. So they're using the software for design while also being able to go back and consult the directions. It's a really cool, you know, process where, you know, the teacher is asked a question and the teacher can direct the students to sort of look that up on their own, which, you know, adds that layer that we want of independence for the high school students. So just asking the teacher and getting an answer, fix something, they're directed to where they can fix it while not closing out that window. And, you know, they're then able to keep, continue to work with SolidWorks. Really interesting things in my observations of the class. Also, by updating the computers in there, the SolidWorks is just a lot easier to use and interface with the machines on the floor of the lab, right? So they're saving things for flash drive and bringing it out to the milling equipment and the other equipment on the floor of the advanced manufacturing to actually create things. This summer, we'll be continuing our advanced manufacturing expansion program, you know, per the general G grant, foundation grant that we have for Cape Ann, recent graduates and other adults to get training in advanced manufacturing. So we'll keep that shop rolling even through the summertime. In the next slide, you can see what the double monitor setup looks like. And you can see, you know, the wonderful lighthouses that the kids make every year. That is, right monitor, right? Has the, you know, information about the how to they're designing with SolidWorks on the left monitor. And then on the floor, they're producing products such as the LMSI on the right there. The next slide, we move on to Auto Tech. Again, we had that second three-year gift from Lion Wa. This funding supports a second auto teacher, which means we can accept 30 students every fall instead of just 15 students. So that's a state requirement, 15 per teacher. We're able to have 30 students. We have accepted 30 students. The year coming, you'll see that later as well. It also means, and something I've observed, is that the instruction at all levels, from the ones all the way up to the level four students can be more differentiated. So Mr. Machell is working with this student on breaks while these students are preparing to dismantle an engine related to the same project over here. And then they can rotate the students, right? So you have three or four kids, six kids that get, are listening and then doing, listening and then doing, or watching and then doing. And they get many more, you know, reps or many more opportunities to take, participate than they would if we just had a single teacher in that class. And that's something that I've been able to observe directly. It's been really great to see this year. The Lion Wa grant also has supported some of the tools and materials. You'll see it a little bit later. This year, with our Perkins Grant funds that I mentioned earlier, we purchased diagnostic scanners. So in your average car, 85% of what's there is diagnosed with a scanner. It's computer diagnosed with a scanner. And students, you know, to be industry ready to work, they need to know how to read those. The particular kind of scanners, I was told down in the shop today, there's only one shop on Cape Ann other than our auto shop that has the same level of tech with the scanners. Because they're branded, right? You're able to.
Oh, you're saying one professional shop.
Yeah, exactly. That's right. Yep. So these are great to see in action as well, seeing students diagnosing and then, right, with this, the diagnostic scanners and then actually applying that to fixing problems that arise. Also, when you have an expansion of a program, you add students, you need basic tools, you know? You need the wrenches, the ratchets. You need all that stuff. So we use Perkins Grant funding this year to also help us expand the program. And you'll see that in the picture slides that come up next. All right, you'll see some of our students, Sam, Ryan, and Austin are showing off the tools that, great, we were able to add to expand our program, help expand our program. They were happy to show it up. They're in the auto three and four program. The next slide, you'll get to see the scanning, how the scanners come. So they're portable around the shop. On the right, you have, that is another thing we purchased this year, which is a rotisserie, right? You can flip the car upside down or back up to work on it in different ways. So you can see doing some, some work there with the rotisserie. It was fun to see that in action. So that's some of what we've been able to upgrade this year. And then, just like in the machine, we're implementing past purchases. So the students, the thing they were really excited to talk to me about was the tire changer and the road force tire balance. It's something they're able to use on a regular basis this year that we purchased last year. Now it's fully implemented into the curriculum for this year. So that's Auto Tech. In the next slide, you get to get a glimpse at our Carpentry Tech program. In Carpentry Tech, the, kind of the way that we're approaching carpentry is through skill building, how parts relate to the whole and on meeting needs. So you can see, I could show windows. But I'm, you know, here I'm showing the staircase. I'm showing some other work, cabinetry work that the students are doing, working on different roofs. They're working on other aspects, the parts that go into the whole. And with each one, they're building different kinds of skills that go into that, whatever that part is over the course of the year. And they're building them from the Carpentry Program Level Four. But they're not only doing that, they're also responding to some of the needs in our, in our school and in our community. So you can see a picture there from our, I could have chosen, there are five or different projects over the course of the year in our nurse's office that the students in the Carpentry Program helped them with. There you can see some shelving they built in to make better use of the space. They built other shelving as well, some other things for our nurse. And also from our Carpentry Program, the beautiful new arch at the promenade was also recently built by our Carpentry Program. So that's, you know, a little bit about skill building, the parts that go into the hole and then meeting some needs that the community has using their skills to do that. Really exciting in electricity. Today was the day that I actually, I got to go around with Bob Devlin and take a look at where we are with the solar power canopy project with a projected completion next spring. This is one of the things I talked about last year. It's something we get started on this year. Up to this point, the students are, what you're seeing here is the ceiling of the auto shop where these, what you're seeing here is the conduit for wiring. And the exciting thing here that Bob was talking about is how the students learn to bend, right? You see the bends. I don't know if how well you can see the picture there. But here and here, they're having to bend the pipes around what's existing in there. And that's all skills that the students developed. And he was really impressed with. He was really worried that they'd be able to pull this off. And they did a really good job. And it looks elegant in there. It's really, you wouldn't know that it was something that students just created and put up. So they're putting in some of the infrastructure that next year they'll be able to continue with, with the project. The next slide gives you a glimpse of where it will be. So if you look between, essentially between the white vertical stripes there to the left and to the right of the auto entrance, the Carpentry Shop will be building canopies that will have the solar panels on them. And another part of the project will be rewiring the auto shop to the right. If you look to the right of that opening, part of the project will also rewire that area. And again, it's a collaboration of all our shops. Machine Tech are doing some of the pieces. It said Carpentry, building canopies. Auto is hosting and using the electricity and some labor that they put into it as well. And then, you know, the main bulk of the project is our electrical students learning solar installation.
So where do the canopies go? Are they attached?
Yeah, they'll be attached off here. Yeah, exactly. And so there's all collaboration with the provider and with engineers to make sure that it's secure. That was one of the things Bob was, Mr. Devlin and I were talking about today. So that's a really exciting project that will, you know, benefit our school and it'll look really cool when it's, when it's ready. The other part of that is other folks doing these canopies is unusual and presents unusual problems. Most of the installation is roof based, right? And so our students will be learning some of what goes along with, with having the solar panels being run off of the canopies. All right, I wish I could remember the differences between that, but Mr. Devlin knows and did tell me today. But there are a lot of details. All right, so this, you can take a look here at our enrollment. So this is really exciting. You could see our advanced manufacturing and machine tech. We increased this year by two students. And the next year are increasing again with additional six students overall and a full 15 students as first year students. Our automotive tech, this year we returned to our pre-pandemic level with a, again, another increase for next year, certainly an increase next year based on selections at this point. Carpentry tech, I can also see a return this year to pre-pandemic levels with a further increase in selections for next year. Carpentry tech, and then, and then really exciting with electricity. This year, we went pretty significantly above our pre-pandemic levels with a further increase in electricity next year. All based on students from O'Malley and other students in the high school choosing to be first year students. We would have a full, you know, all of our, one, first year students would be full. If any of those students drop, there is a waitlist. So students from the waitlist would be invited to come, fill those spots if any student decides not to go forward in the fall or if they come off later in the year as well.
How big is the waitlist? Do you know?
Yes, it's about 17, I think, when I looked at it last.
In total?
Total for all the shops. Yep. That's me.
So all the shops are the next up?
Yes, yeah. Basically, yeah, the enrollments, they're right now all next up. So when, actually, the next slide, you can see. So automotive tech, we had 42 students select auto as their first choice. We ran the lottery and placed 30 students, the lottery that's part of the admissions. For electricity, which was, you know, jumped above Carpentry Tech. That's where we see the greatest increase. 29 students had that as their first choice with 15 students, the maximum placed. Carpentry Tech, 27, 15 placed. And advanced manufacturing, only nine students selected that as their first choice, but other students had it as their second choice. And if they didn't get in, one of the other shops, we were able to add students there to fill out the advanced manufacturing shop as well. We know that with our director coming in that one of the things we need to do is education around it, advanced manufacturing, like that's, we know that's one of our lifts. We had a lot of momentum there pre-pandemic and we're looking to get back to it, especially with Brenda Wasslech picking up the director role starting July 1st. Because it's, just do a tour of that shop and realize how interesting it is. This is exactly the kind of thing a lot of kids are into, design, right, using technology, designing and then making something as well as all those combinations for kids.
Shane.
Lori has a question.
Um, so was everyone placed into a first or second choice? Or are there kids who, students who were not?
There are, there are students who didn't, who are on the waitlist.
So who didn't get into a first or second?
Who didn't get into a first, second, or third choice.
Oh, wow. Okay, and those in the 17.
Yep, exactly. Yeah, and some people opted not to be on the waitlist, right? So you don't all go onto the waitlist. So that's what I counted right before this. It might be changing. We're still building the schedule. So it could probably not be 18 this moment because of a counselor doing work with kids. But that's the way it was, yeah. But that's the way it was, yeah.
Two quick questions, James. One is, and you've probably told us this at times, retention rate, what is the retention, I mean, the kids?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question. You know, it very much varies. And there is a significant, when students have to move, so first year they have one course, one block of their seven block day. Their second year, they have two. Their third and fourth year, they have three of their seven blocks in the shop. So we tend to see it about cut and half about by the time they get to the third and fourth year from who came in. And that's another thing that in our plan moving forward, we want to be able to retain students because our plan is fourth year students should be going out into the workplace, right? And then we're able to keep fit, you know, whether it's thirty or thirty in auto, fifteen in the other shops, maintain that fifteen. If we maintain students, we will have too many kids their senior year, but that's where job placement, which we do now. But we want that to be nearly universal for our fourth year students going forward.
Which dovetails into my second point is I, it sounds like we do job placement now. And I wrote down, what are we doing to connect kids to local manufacturers, CNC machine shops?
So we have folks come in and present to our students. We also have, through the GE grant, we have connections to folks there. And we have the advisories for each shop that have the industry representation on them. And they advise us, that's how we're able to, not just with the know-how of the teacher plus the advisory, allow us to make sure we're purchasing what we need to be, preparing students for industry, right? So those are the other connections. So folks come into classes and give talks to about careers in the field and local opportunities. We connect kids, again, through the advisories, have more explicit connections. And then throughout the year, we have students at our level four programs placed. So they're actually working for the second half of the day. E F and G block, they're out there building at their job sites.
Yes, Melissa, go ahead.
Thanks, thank you. First, I just want to say, James, I commend you for the progress that is being made in these programs. You promised me in the committee years ago that you were going to put a big effort into these programs and it's really starting to show and that makes me very, very excited. My one question is, are the students in these programs, are they keeping portfolios? I know you've talked about projects they're working on. Are they keeping track of the projects they're working on with documentation so that when they leave the high school with their certifications, they have something to present to a potential employer?
That's a great, that's, that's, that's something that the director, so our new director and I were talking about. Her background is in graphic design. Her portfolios are unbelievable, they're so great. So yes, we have some of that, Melissa, but I wouldn't say that it's one of the strengths yet of our programs, right? I would say the strength is like walking into the shop and seeing the work kids are doing on daily basis. So one of the things about bringing Brenda on in particular of any candidate is she has tremendous expertise in that area. Her materials are just, right, really, yeah, it's what she does, right? So that's something that's really exciting, that she'll be able to add that and bring that to each of the shop teachers for whom that might not be, you know, it isn't their expertise, right? So that's something that I know you had mentioned previously and that I talked to Brenda about already. So I'm excited, hopefully, you know, next year at this time, we'll be looking at some of student-created materials in this presentation.
Great, thank you, I can't wait to meet her, looking forward to it.
So with the auto tech, I'm curious to know, how does somebody get a car in there? I mean, is there a selection process? You know, if the instructor is saying, hey, we need to learn about this kind of problem, let's find a car with that problem.
So what we've done during COVID and kept doing in this year is we're working on donation cars right now. We haven't opened back up yet. And so that'll be one of the things that I work on with Brenda and with supporter and Mr. Macho about how do, when we open back up again, how do we open back up again? Because it's been, it's been a little while and then we have some more oversight with with our new director. So, so stay tuned, I'll be, I'll be able to.
So it might be different than before.
It might be different than before, exactly. And what we think of is we've learned some things. I know Jack and Bud, supporter, Mr. Macho, have some ideas about that. Because one of the things about the donations and the cars, they can, they can work on, as you were saying, they can work on particular things based on these donations as opposed to just relying on whatever comes in.
Well, that rotisserie thing was quite amazing.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, yeah.
So it's a lot of like bodywork as well.
That's right.
I have a question. So if someone's a freshman and they're moving on to a sophomore, do they apply to?
Yes, they can, yep. And they're, and they're treated, as long as they have two years, seniors are, so sophomores, yes, juniors, yes, can apply. Rising sophomores, rising juniors, we have some of those. And they're treated, the admissions is blind to that, we don't prefer one to one. There are a few more slides?
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure we didn't lose the vision for you.
Second, sorry, I thought I was doing this very efficiently.
It's okay, I can talk. It's a lot of words, the pictures are over, it's a lot of words left. You wanna?
Oh, here we go.
Okay, you got it, all right. So last year, we set as our primary long-term goals for CBT and GHS and for Gloucester overall, that we would continue to strengthen and grow our existing programs, but also expand CBT to add a program or programs that enroll more students in a broader range of students. So you may remember that. So that's one of the goals of bringing on a director. So right now, you know, we have a sustainable improvement plan that involves the equipment, the curriculum, and learning opportunities. We partner with Omeleye, present our programs, so students apply to them. As you've seen, we've had quite a bit in terms of application. And then we maintain industry and community partnerships with our advisory committees. So what we want to do is we want to strengthen our communication with students and families about our programs. We want, and particularly advanced manufacturing is one that lies behind. Create more of those industry partnerships, Bill, that you were talking about with internships and co-ops. And then create more articulation agreements with some post-secondary institutions. As well as be able to track what happens to our graduates better. And that's something that is, you know, we need some administrative capacity to do that, that we'll have with the director. So that's our goal, our first goal. Oh, yes, maximizing funding, I have the bar of all your faces under. So goal two, expand the CBT with the additional program or program. So to do that, we have to explore a new cost-effective program for students who are not being served by our current programs, which include practical nursing or health assisting. There are some other programs we'd be looking at as well, but those are cost-effective. They don't take a lot of infrastructure investment and would really serve students that are not currently, you know, the area of interest that isn't currently being served, not only by our CBT programs, but isn't being served elsewhere in our curriculum. To do that, we need to conduct market research by working with the mass hire workforce board, see what students want, then design that program, develop a budget for it, identify what staffing will be needed, seek grants to support this expansion and partnerships as well, so for job opportunities there. And then we would need to establish program advisory committees, just like we have for the other programs. And along the way, we work with Essex North for our agricultural technical school. It's part, that's a requirement that we would anyway, it's a requirement of expanding. So our likely timeline, year one would be, you know, this is for that second goal, doing the background research in the market, what are students interested in, identify funding so that hopefully in year two, we would be able to apply for a new program. We would have to finalize what's needed financially, set up the facilities and equipment, meaning identify the room and the space of the school where a new program could be housed, develop that program of studies so students can apply for it, hire the personnel to work in the program, finalize those agreements with industry to place students, and make sure we follow up on graduates so that in year three, we could actually enroll students in this program. That year two is really important, working very closely with DESI for approval. There are a lot of things you can't just do it on our own, we have to get approval for it. So that's why I've outlined those steps here.
So next year is year one. And while this is happening to build, to expand the program, bring out at least a new program, all the strength continues. As James already said, a lot more leadership, resources, human resources to do that. One piece, just to chime in on the strength and the partnerships is, so we're about to get going in a concrete way, connecting CBT students program with a EGSS building project. So that hopefully happened on two levels. One, in the shorter term, building a shed that they built. And then, and throughout next year, hopefully having a bit of carpentry and electric technology at the school building. We're hoping to do that, it's not in place yet, but there's a lot of interest from private teams.
Two questions. I can't remember if the director who is being hired, is it time limited hire or?
So right now, we have one year of funding on the, through an honor donor, which yeah, helped us to. And then plans to put that out very much next year. So that's the plan here and we're going.
Go with the plan. And my second question is, James, I don't know if I'm, now that we're in graduation season, I seem to remember last year, someone went to an aeronautical, right, with an aeronautical post, you know. Did that, did that person come out of the CBT programs?
Yes, I believe.
I believe it was auto.
Auto, yes, exactly, that's my recollection as well.
Okay, yeah, because I just, I was really fascinated by that and I'm sort of interested in that. It's just the directions that students can go from these programs.
That's right.
Any more questions? Someone to report.
I want to know a little bit more about the tie-in with Essex Navy Tech. It says a requirement that we consult with them. So because we're in the same area, when it was that like, in terms of work, the workforce we're developing, we're developing as well, as are they and the other schools in their catchment area. So when we're looking to expand a program, it's a requirement that we coordinate with them, that we, they're informed. We also have great resources. They, there's a lot of know-how there. So we regularly have connections with.
Would, would there be something that would, you know, prevent us from, say, expanding in a certain area because of what they're doing? I mean, that would be a part of, as long as there's a workforce need, which the areas that, the examples I gave are areas in which there's a larger need than being met currently. The nursing, the medical, the technical area. That's just, that's preliminary conversations with the state about that without crunching the numbers yet. There's plenty of need there, so it wouldn't prevent us. It could, I mean, there is a possibility of there being certain fields that we wouldn't be able to, the state would say no because there isn't the workforce need there or that workforce need is covered by, you know, a regional school in Essex Tech. But that's not any of the places we're located, but that is.
Melissa has a question.
Muted.
You're muted, Melissa. Thank you, sorry, not a question, but more of a clarification. So when we joined Essex Tech years ago with a new school, we are in a contract with them and part of the contract language is that we cannot compete with their programs with the exception of the programs that we have already. So if we're going to expand and go and offer a program that Essex Tech has, we have to get the vote of their school committee in addition to working with DESI. But there is that requirement under our contract with them. But I'm sure it won't be a problem. And when you work with Dr. Richo, she's going to be more than happy to have offerings to other students because their programs are full.
We help them recruit. I'm pretty sure that'll be helpful in helping us develop new programs.
I didn't know if you had a copy of that agreement on file, so that you know, there's certain language that we have to.
Right, you know, we'll track it down, I haven't seen it, but we'll track it down, thank you, Melissa, that's helpful.
I had this thought, you know, as far as graduates, about perhaps like a special alumni night for just the vocational programs? Do you have anything like that?
You know, that's something we have, we haven't had at night. We have alumni come back to the school to speak to our students from different programs, including our vocational program in January is the time when we, but not, you know, something showcased.
Yeah, well, there would be like some kind of mixer, you know, like, hey, this is where I got, you know, just to like, you know, part of the kids, like, this is where you could be, this is how hard I've gotten. It's what I'm doing.
It's pretty great when some of the businesses that come in to recruit our students are, you know, represented by our former students, right? And all that, right, that frequent, including teachers in our program too. But yeah, all of that, that's, I like that idea, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, James, good stuff.
Okay, the next item of business is Omeleye Innovation Middle School, end of year student learning update, principal can be. And Laura, I'm blanking on her last name. Thank you. Doctor, thank you.
Thanks for having me back so soon, I feel like I was just here. Real run for me, so thanks. So what you're looking at just to start is, this is one of the exhibitions from our Evening of Excellence. This is a sixth grade math class in which students illustrated their learning for the year. So if you weren't able to make that next year, be sure to be there. I'm going to talk about several pieces from our plan this year. So just to refresh your memory, we've been through these, our three focus areas, our improving student learning, student engagement, and professional collaboration. And our strengths, you know, still the same categories. We've accomplished some things this year under our strengths with, you know, progress we've made with the literacy review, social emotional support and implementing our SEL Center. With STEM and critical and creative thinking, we have expanded our science center, our PACE program. I'll talk about it in a bit, the success we've had with the number of days that students would have been out of school that, in which they were in school. As people talked about earlier, the concerts were phenomenal, the musical was phenomenal. It's really exciting to have our arts back in place and then our leadership teams focusing on growth. So first, just quickly, a few points of what we've accomplished and are working on with professional collaboration. Primarily, I want to highlight the work of the literacy review committee that Laura did a spectacular job facilitating. We are going to be ready to go to pilot products in the fall with an implementation in the spring. So a lot of work was done this year around that. And then the second highlight on this slide is the continuation of our PLC process with student success plans. And our weekly, or sorry, every six days, there's a meeting among the house teachers. So this year, we were able to implement forty-two plans, nineteen of which, almost half of them were complete, closed up in four to six weeks with success. And the remainder, most are ongoing. There were some glitches around mental health issues coming in and some different things came up that we'll have to figure out how to address and deal with, not necessarily things we have control of over at school as well. But that's a pretty good ratio for our first real work with with success plans for kids. With regard to student engagement, one of our focus areas, the one I want to focus on mostly here are two things. Community meetings by house during which advisory groups decided on many, many different service learning projects. Many of you remember the day of service that we used to have in the fall where everybody went out raking leaves, even though we didn't really have enough houses to rake. This year, people did a variety of things like create, make two toys for dogs, what you're pictured, and, you know, do book drives, send letters to folks around town, gather food and do all kinds of different kinds of projects with, by advisory, kids decided what their projects were going to be. And we'll be expanding that again next year. Also with related, with regard to student engagement on that one, the PACE program. So this year, a total of fifty-three students were in school for sixty-nine days. So that's sixty. this year, a total of fifty-three students were in school for sixty-nine days, so that's sixty-nine days of learning that were, were not lost by kids who had some sort of egregious conduct incident that caused a suspension, but we were able to keep them in and learning instead of at home on the couch playing video games, so that's definitely a success for us. We did run for the second year a three-part student climate survey. So students are asked a series of questions, I want to say there's forty odd questions in the survey in different categories, self-awareness, social awareness, self-regulation, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, student engagement, adult respect, student respect, adult support, and safety. So it's a little bit similar to the survey that they take at the end of MCAS eighth grade, but ours is broader. So a couple of highlights that I think we should be proud of. This one, there's at least one trusted adult in the building who I can talk to, eighty-two percent of our students have that, we want it to be a hundred percent, but that's a good starting point for us. I feel safe while at school, eighty-one percent, again, we'd like that higher. The survey, by the way, was administered right after the Friday of the week of the Texas shooting, so although the numbers were, you know, pretty steady across the year. Like, I'm sure I'm wondering what the reflection would be if that hadn't been the case on that Friday. On this next slide, of course, the O'Malley Academy shines, but the third question, there are lots of chances for kids to do things after school, eighty-nine percent of the kids find a lot of that. Two places where we have work to do, we've already started talking and thinking about getting kids more engaged. That's where most of what I learn is interesting, and my teachers connect what I'm doing to the outside classroom. And data teams today, there were a lot of conversations about, and actually each of the math data meetings started with an exploration that was an estimation activity that, that got everybody thinking, and the conversations revolved around, how do we get kids hooked, the ignite strategy from Zaretta Hammond, getting them right involved with, with doing something and getting their thinking going and be creative about it. So that's, that's on our desk to, to focus on in the future, next year. And then this last piece, this is where we have our greatest concerns, we have some work to do. The rules and school-wide expectations for behavior are very clear, is only seventy-seven percent, it should be higher, although still in the green in terms of the way we look at percentages on these kinds of surveys. But the students respecting one another only being at sixty percent this spring, and students think it's important to follow rules being forty-five percent. I think that's reflective this year in particular of the challenges that many schools have faced around conduct issues, and it's certainly a focus that we've got right in our radar. The next portion of the presentation, I'm gonna turn over to Laura, she's gonna talk through the data that we've collected around particularly reading and math. The slides we're gonna share with you are very similar to the slides that.
Can I ask a question before you move on to that, just a quick question? Are these survey results shared with all the teachers and staff?
The spring has not been yet, but they will be, yeah. So we continue our work on the curriculum review, particularly in the area of literacy, and I'll highlight some things in the coming slides that are starting to indicate the movements that we're seeing around literacy. Our, you know, objectives throughout the curriculum review have been to really look at scope and sequence, to look at materials and resources and tools that we're using to look at teaching strategies, not just in ELA classes, but in literacy across all content areas. And we are at the point, we're meeting on Monday to make final arrangements for what our next steps are going for, for piloting in the fall, so we're very excited about that. We did some work with keys to literacy over the course of the school year, which you may recall, we had a focus on two column notes. It's been really interesting as the teachers across every content area have have been incorporating two column note-taking into their instruction. Students are anecdotally sharing with teachers and with their classmates how for a lot of kids, the strategy is connecting with them and helping them organize information in a manner that is, is much more succinct and clear for them. A few of them even on the Evening of Excellence chose that as their topic that they wanted to share with incoming students and with guests, so that was exciting to see the impact that that small step has made. For data teams, we started that in the fall and it had been continuing on really creating and refining the process of looking at student data from a number of different perspectives, from the standards alignment and scope and sequence, what standards are we really successful with, what standards are, do we need to move around because we're not hitting at the appropriate time, and what standards do we continue to need more work in, what are the steps we need to make those changes? And also, how does that line up with the tools and resources that, that we are, are using, you know, going back again to literacy review and the upcoming math. So our student growth data, we're gonna start with ELA, and like I said, these are slides that you had seen a few months ago, but we've just added in the spring data, so we'll start with sixth grade ELA. So what we're seeing is fluctuation. Our students in the not meeting category, they came in at about thirteen percent. There was a dip in the winter, they're back up to thirteen percent. But the important thing to note with all of this is that the bar keeps getting higher every time they take it, so the bar for not meeting or partially meeting or meeting expectation was at one point in the fall, then it was at a different point in the winter, and it's at the highest peak now. So, so they're continuing to, you know, moving and hopefully remain on par, if not further from that bar. So that's our sixth grade ELA data. And the next slide is a longitudinal look at it, so you can see with the blue bars where the children left at the end of last year. So we're looking to see what has that changed then over with the cohort, all the way from the end of their previous school year to the end of this common school year.
Right, just one short, so spring, so that was when they were in fifth grade?
The blue is when they were in fifth grade.
Okay, yeah, so you compiled the data from all the schools?
Yeah. And we can continue that process now, cuz we can, we can track this cohort over the course of several years to see what you know, what steps we're taking, what's working and not working, and make adjustments in real time. So our seventh grade data, you, you see some plateaus there. We don't see quite the dips and rises that we saw before, but statistically, it's all very close, and again, with that bar continuing to rise, we that's what you hope to see, if not greater gains, so it's good that we're not losing ground there. This is a longitudinal look at our seventh graders. You know, the end of sixth grade, you can see a point to highlight here is when they left sixth grade, there was twenty-six percent scoring in that not meeting category. It dropped down in the fall to fourteen, and we've been able to keep kids out of that band throughout the course of the school year, and you can see the rises on the other end.
Quick question, Margaret. Snapshot, if you can, to me, you said the bar continually moves. Like, how does that, does that skew the results at all, am I missing something?
No, it doesn't, it skews, it doesn't skew the results, it just, it frames how we look at it, so the, similar to MCAS over the course of several years, there's certain cut points for each category, the cut points change, so let's say that you scored in the sixtieth percentile nationally, you scored higher than sixty percent of all other seventh grade students who took this assessment. Back in the fall, that sixty percent might have had you meeting or exceeding falling into that category, but in the spring, you're only, that, that same sixty percent, you're, you're only falling into the partially meeting, so, so the bar keeps rising of how, what you have to attain to to move over to those meeting and exceeding categories.
And the notion is that, cuz you should have gained more fluency or more knowledge or more, you know, and I, I, I'll try this analogy, if they're at work, we'll see as your, when your kids are young and they're being measured against, you know, size or length or height, okay? Like that, where there should be in terms of a normal range continues to change because they are growing older and getting bigger. So in this case, because you're further along in the school year, what partially meeting is higher, what partially meeting was earlier. Is that helping?
Yes.
I think of it as, if they were completely flat from fall to spring, the test gets harder through the year. So that means if I'm flat, that means I'm staying, I'm growing perfectly appropriate along with the grade level. So we want our kids to grow more than that because we want form at a higher level, but they're, they're growing progressively with the grade level.
Definitely, we definitely wanna be aiming to get more and more kids to meet.
Yep.
And you, you're gonna keep going with the data, so I don't wanna slow you down, but just from what we've seen with six and seven, so so less than fifty percent in all grades are meeting our targets. And then lumped in this, say, what we're looking at now, is that forty-one percent is spring meeting and exceeding. So in that forty-one percent are the kids who are sort of solid, and then there's the kids who are, you know, exceeding that, and they're they're together in there, and there's differentiation happening for them, or, okay.
And there's also a tension on the, you know, we go down to the student level with all of this, and, and how we're looking at it when there's fluctuation, you know, particularly in the partially meeting category, where did those kids go? How many of the kids that moved out of the partially meeting moved into the meeting or exceeding? And what was that gain, or if they fell back, what was, what was the, you know, decrease, if there is one, that caused them to, to land in another band, so we're looking at the, all the way down to the student level.
And now, just the summer, I'm also looking at, like, it looks like there's a drop off, which I think is expected, right? In some summer, you know, from, from spring to fall, but it looks like the partially meeting kids here in this one didn't, and I'd be curious to know if they, if these were kids who were tapped for summer school, you know, for programs, they help with that.
Yeah, excellent question. And it certainly informs what our effective strategies over the summer are. Our, our eighth grade ELA data for the course of the year, you can see that the students came in in the fall fifteen percent not meeting, forty-eight percent partially meeting, thirty-seven percent meeting, and then you can see the adjustments over the course of of the school year, and pretty consistent growth between winter and, and spring. Again, we want to continue to close that gap, so we're looking for ambitious growth, not just regular expected growth, but it gives, this certainly informs our instruction. And this screen just is another illustration of this cohort of students and where they left off in seventh grade. Let's see, on the MCAS, the high needs population was, was really an area that was targeted for us in the past, so we're also working to disaggregate this data and pull out exactly where our students that fall into a high needs category for a variety of reasons, and what that distribution looks like as well, and that's what you'll see on the next slide. We've seen, this is similar to a slide that we showed you in the winter. There are adjustments, we've seen growth in each category, modest growth, but, but we're seeing that growth in all of the categories, moving closer and closer to meeting and exceeding. For math, we have fluctuations which we are to be expected because we're really concentrated on literacy this year, but the same trajectory, you can see the students meeting and exceeding came in at forty percent in the fall, and it's, it's elevated to forty-three percent. We want us to continue to see that rise. This is a longitudinal information for those students. Forty-one percent leaving fifth grade last year at meeting or exceeding, and now forty-three for where we stand right now. Our seventh grade math, you see a fluctuation consistently maintaining in the, the not meaning category, and then some variations in the partially meeting and the meeting and exceeding for math. And what it looked like for our students when they left sixth grade, so they came in at thirty-five percent, or they left sixth grade at thirty-five percent meeting or exceeding, and then you can see the dip and then the, the rise and the dip again within that category. And our eighth grade, very similar, where, you know, one of the things that we have done throughout our, our data meetings and looking at this is looking at patterns, and you can definitely see the roller coaster pattern across the fall, winter, and, and spring testing. And how much of that is test fatigue with, with them taking these assessments, you know, right off of their, their multiple days of MCAS testing, so we're looking at testing windows and how can we move that around to make sure that we're maximizing student performance and making sure that we're getting the most accurate reflection of their abilities. And this is longitudinally, you can see with our, our eighth graders coming in at meeting, excuse me, leaving seventh grade at thirty-two percent meeting and exceeding, and leaving eighth grade at thirty-nine. One of the things, especially when you're embarking on this process, this change process, and, and really trying to follow the data and see what it tells us, is we're looking at it in those snapshots from a very, very high level. And when you're looking at the change process, you, you start to see baby steps first. So did we see any baby steps in here that are really good indication that we're, you know, we're on the right path? And I think our growth data in literacy really speaks to that, so what we have here is a chart for, this is the growth data for all students K to eight for, for the school year. So in the ELA, for our growth data for the sixth through eighth graders, we, we scored in the fifty-seventh percentile was the median growth data, which is great, and while we're not seeing necessarily the shift between bands that we, we were hoping to see, what we're looking for is, are they moving? And, you know, across the district, we're seeing that, that they're made significant gains in, in that area of growth. Math is the area where we're, we're falling behind our counterparts at the elementary level in the math growth, but again, that's where, you know, we're, we're weaving in that effort and follow with our math curriculum review.
Just a question on that graph, just so I understand.
Sure.
Previous one, so student growth percentages, so is, as a percentile, I'm assuming it's based on a hundred?
Yes, it's, it's a median based on a hundred.
Okay, so this is, this is the growth from where they were to where they are now.
So just to dovetail into that, so the so the blue column, is, is it the same students?
No, that's our current elementary students.
Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
You know, cuz we're looking to see what are the trends across the district, and in a, when we're trying to measure our growth and, and where we're successful and where we're keeping par across the district, or if, if we're not keeping par across the district, we want to look at the totality of, of growth, so we, we really is, we find that elementary information very useful to us and helping us in our trends.
What you're, what you're aiming for on, on the growth for the sixth year above? That's considered, you know, high or faster growth. Okay, so you see we're on sort of verge of that, and a couple of these, ELA, KX, so a sixth to eighth ELA, sixth to eighth ELA, and K five math, right? But that's, just so you know, that, that's where you're aiming, sixth year above on that to see a growth, that, that's really where, you know, kids are growing at a rate faster than the peers, that's a significantly faster than the others. And what, what they're doing here, I think this is right, and Greg or Laura, correct me if that, this is a comparison to other kids in other places doing Star.
This is the national.
Yeah.
Okay, that would like, I didn't wanna sound like a dummy, but.
No, no, not at all.
Different assessments work with that, so it's a good question.
Who are we comparing ourselves to?
Anything from fifty and above is, is positive growth relative to their national peers. So it's not, we're not looking for a hundred percent on something like this, that's not.
Okay.
It's not, we're not talking about mastery, we're not talking about scaled scores, we're simply saying, of all the students in all the districts that use Star three sixty, you know, where do our students fall relative to that, that median? And anything above fifty is, is, is in good, and anything above sixty is considered very. And anything above sixty is considered very strong. And you will rarely see, you know, seventy, eighty, ninety, something like that, that would be extraordinary.
But that, that often happens if a student has been, a student or students or group of students have been doing very, very poorly for whatever reason.
Right.
And then they have, you know, it's, it's, and then they can grow with acceleration, they're actually sporting really fast.
Right.
And that's, that's the group of students you'll see who are at seventy or plus for having experience.
So while we, you know, this is the indication that we're moving in the right direction and we'll see those bands changing over time, which is, you know, the, the bigger picture of what we're looking for. And then this is just a snapshot again of our high need students and, and the adjustments, um, in winter and the categories that they're following up. Falling into and indicating, you know, where with our high need students, we need to concentrate our efforts and analyze, um, how best to support them.
The, um, you're grouping, um, students with disabilities with economically disadvantaged. What was the, what's the purpose of that?
Those are MCAS categories, so our, our high needs categories are, um, students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged and English language learners. So our English language learners in these statistics, the percentages were too low to be statistically significant.
Be numbers of students.
And these are, what's that?
Be numbers of students.
Numbers of students and, and that who participated, yeah. And, um, in, in our past performance in the twenty nineteen MCAS that we were comparing to, um, our English language learners were not. Considered, um, they, they did well as compared to these two categories, these two demographics. So not lumped together as much as it's, these are the high needs categories.
That's, high needs students is the umbrella, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the umbrella term for those three categories.
Yeah, the state considers a student to be high needs if, um, they fall under any one or more of those three categories. When you look at clustered data, like if you go to the state, you look at our data, it's in these categories, like that's just the state.
It's the way the, uh, MCAS, uh, could be crumbled, yes.
No, it's, it's, it's basically, ultimately, when, um. This, this is not, a lot of things, it shifted over the last twenty five years, right, or thirty years, is, is not only in education, it's in many other fields. It's just a, a better understanding of not only data, but how to use data. And so basic disaggregation is, if we're just looking at, at, at the whole, being all students, and don't look at that, of course. Then it is, it is likely or possible you are hiding deficiencies, okay? So you disaggregate, you disaggregate by grade, you disaggregate by boys or girls, you disaggregate by, um, uh, you raise your class. You disaggregate by, um, in this case, subgroups, you know, um, high needs or special education. And that's in order to, for us to learn and have a closer understanding of maybe doing really well with eighth graders without that well with seventh graders. Okay, we do really well with high need students without that well with English language learners. And if you, unless you disaggregate, you will be masking the, uh, places that are strength, of strength. And also places of particular strength, the places that may be particularly deficient. You know, it's, it's a, it's a basic approach in any, for data analysis to understand, deep understanding of how you're doing or anything. That could be sales, that could be, you know, in terms of regions, you know, or sectors, that could be, um.
Um, so this is just again, we've, we've shown this before, this is our plan. And we're gonna continue with it next year, it's literacy and math. Again, focusing on the tier one, adding the math intervention into company literacy intervention. And then expanding scaling so that we can continue the, the modest growth that we started to make and expand that. And these are the places that we're going, um, to improve everything, we've again gone through this before, I don't wanna be redundant. Um, but we're continuing to push along with our curriculum reviews, our professional development focus on. Understanding, uh, universal design for learning and our literacy, bringing math in, continuing with the assessments. Today's conversation at the data teams was a little bit about our, our report card grades to see, you know, how we can make them, um, a better. Measurement of what students are actually learning. So perhaps it's an assessment grade and a practice grade, so we can, um, delineate between. When kids are, are getting the handle of things and getting their work done and their effort versus what do they actually learn? So that's a helpful data point to us that along with STAR and along with some other pieces.
Laura.
Um, so one thing that, um, sort of interested me, how many days of testing do they have? Um, it depends, so MCAS is two days per subject. When the eighth grade has science in addition to the, to English, to math. Um, the STAR testing takes a day for math and a day for English, three times a year. Um, and then English has an additional day for a writing benchmark.
That's thirteen, that's that, thirteen, eighteen, thirteen, eighteen.
That's a total, yes. Thirteen days.
But they're, are they full days or?
No, no, no.
No, I didn't think so.
Yeah, no.
So maybe thirteen times.
It's a, it's a single block, so if their English class today, you're gonna have tests and the other classes have got regular instruction.
But is MCAS full day?
No, MCAS can, it, it runs the gamut from a couple of hours to, it, it's very student dependent.
Right.
Yeah, anywhere from forty five minutes to that.
So, so maybe it'd be better to say thirteen sessions, so.
Yeah, sessions, yes.
Because it can be more than a class period, MCAS can be more than a class period, but STAR is a class.
Yeah, the other, the other assessments are just, are a separate class period.
And that's the goal, most because of eighth grade is science, um, you're taking just a MCAS day off for fifth or six and seven? Because you don't have science.
Yeah, the only grade of tests in science is eighth.
So take up two sessions for seven.
And two sessions, yeah, every six, yeah.
So, cause you, you said, you know, we don't know if it's testing fatigue and I thought that was interesting.
Yes.
It's a lot of testing. Um, which I know MCAS are, you know, I, I'm not offering a solution.
Really, that's the one I'd get rid of, I had to choose.
Right, no, I know, um, but it's, I mean, as a parent, I saw the sort of elementary lead up to MCAS. And I can't imagine, you know, what's different in middle school, but I have an idea. Um, so I just, I just thought that was an interesting data point, that these kids are being tested and tested and tested. Um, and I don't know if it's more difficult, the more stressful for kids who are struggling more, but I think it could be. Um, so I just wonder if there's any thing to do about it.
I, I think I'm hearing it differently than you are, Laura, I'm not hearing they're testing and testing and testing, I'm hearing there are, there are sessions.
Thirteen days that have a session is still a day when you have a session, that you know you have a big test. So I'm just, I'm just asking, because you've said there could be some fatigue. I would, I would, I don't consider the fatigue to be related to stress as much as they don't care anymore how they do on the test. I see. They're tired of that, that particular activity.
I see.
Yeah.
And, and Laura, were you, were you saying that specifically because they just done MCAS, ensure that after MCAS they were doing STAR?
Yes.
Is that what you're, were you?
So we're, we're looking at everything, we're looking at how, when we see a, a student that has significant discrepancy in their performance in the winter and their performance in the spring. Or what the teacher is seeing in class and what the teacher, you know, the report that we're, one of the first things they're doing is looking at, well, how long did they take on this? Because if we're looking in, you took four minutes on this, we know that that's not an accurate representation. We might not be able to do much about it in the moment, but we wanna factor everything in because at the end of the day. Our goal is to make sure that we're giving you everything you need to be successful. And if we have to revamp our assessment strategy in some way to, to help with that, we wanna look at how, you know, every possible consideration.
Definitely, I'm just sort of processing it.
Sure. Thank you. I just wanna follow up just a little bit, um, from all the presentations we've had on MCAS over the years, um. You know, one of the examples of how to improve was are we pacing our, our lessons correctly? Are we testing, are they being tested on things we haven't got to? And this may be another factor that may come up. So it's, um, so it's all information that helps improve. Either our, where we put instruction or how we do instruction when we do the assessment so that we, yeah, so it's. It's one, it's a lot of information that can be.
Yeah, one of the pieces of data that we get from STAR that we don't get the same way from MCAS is what is it that they struggled with on this assessment? So there's a report for every kid that tells you which standards they had trouble with, so we can look at it. And we, we get a report on all of their performance, not, not the individual questions per se. But the information on each of the standards they were tested on, so that we can look at it and say, you know, did we teach that in November and never go back to it? Or, you know, or did the, did the student spend fourteen minutes or, you know, much less time than they should? Um, and, and see what we can do to, to change that up. Because the information we get from is really valuable for that student and for students overall. And you get them real quickly too.
It's immediate.
Right.
And it also tells us what's going well, our, our students, when we drill down to those standards, their vocabulary development standards. Over the course of, of the year have grown exponentially and that's great news. And so we were able to have conversations about what does that look like? How is the instruction taking place that's influencing that and how do we replicate that, that in other areas? So it, it's, it gives us, it means a lot of information for us, there are definitely benefits to it.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
No, I mean, I guess when I look at this data, I sort of, it's hard for me not to think about sort of. Where they are developmentally and I sort of think about sixth and seventh grade being sort of brought with lots of challenges. Um, and there being a big difference in maturity and resiliency between sixth and eighth grade. And sort of, I noticed that there was some more consistency in the eighth grade data than sixth century data. And so I just sort of been wondering, I don't know if this is a question or a comment, but do you sort of? Is there room for that in your analysis, just thinking about sort of what kids are going through socially and emotionally in sixth and seventh grade and in eighth grade? But it seems like there's a, there's a jump in maturity and resiliency.
In this particular set of data, yes, that hasn't always been the case.
Yeah.
But yes, everything comes into play. Why is it with this particular group of kids that they were able to maintain? Or what is it that we did in instruction or how the classes were structured and, and, but always questions that that's, most of the conversations that happen. To try and figure out what it is that caused either the positives or the negatives in, in the demonstration of work.
Right. Thank you.
So just to wrap up, if I, if I can, um, I wanna say, sort of say something out loud that perhaps the folks are thinking. I, I know that, that Warren and Minar is two things that really need to go together. And some talk was a part of it, which is, these aren't good enough results, you know? A little fifty percent of kids meeting expectations is not good enough. And, and we know that, and we think you know that. And at the same time, the work that, uh, this team has gotten going this year is the right work to impact that. And it's, in a, in a, in a important way over time, and we have to. And, you know, we'll continue to work together, you know, as a team, uh, continue to work with the, uh, staff, digital mailing. Both to understand, you know, where these kids, where, where middle school kids are developmentally, so have been a middle school teacher, these are. They are lovable, fun kids and, and, and a different level of maturity, that, that literally is in the middle, the elementary and, 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 and high school, right? Um, which makes a lot of fun, but it also means that we get to know these kids well and do the instructional work, the review of ELA that. The instructional focus you're talking about, the training and support, you're doing data analysis, they describe it and they do it, you know? That's the, I think that's the first time folks that have come to you, uh, in a long time, talking about, maybe like two of those things. And the teachers doing it and getting the hang of it and receiving, impact on it. So both those things are really important, but, uh, the, the primary one is we can do better.
I think the only information we've had historically was MCAS and that's, you know, not actionable, it's way after the fact. It's comparing to the state, it's not really dissecting. Child was moving through their school year and skills they're acquiring or not acquiring. So I'm pleased to see the similar presentations that we've been getting for elementary, which have really made a big difference in the way, um, kids are.
I mean, I think that was the last word.
No, it wasn't the last word.
It wasn't the last word.
It was, it was the last word.
It's a bit of a weird, that's.
I know, but, you know, it was a nice spring. Um, just thinking about the conduct data or the survey. Um, and I know, I mean, again, you're as professionals, but I've been reading so much about how this. This two year, three year period has impacted especially middle school students, especially that age group. I mean, as you said, this is happening all over the country. Um, are there, you know, I can only imagine that that impacts all of this, right? Cause that's their social emotional health and everything they're experiencing in this moment of great tumult. Um, you know, I'm assuming that there's like sort of national, statewide or national, um. Sort of people looking at how, how to rebuild, um, for these students, I mean, who are struggling in these ways. And the conduct is part of it. And I'm just, I know, I know that we put a lot into the social emotional piece this year and moving forward. Um, I mean, I guess, I guess it's sort of a question and comment, how do you see that? You know, the adjusting hopefully out of this really intense period at school? How do you see that as playing a role in improving what we're doing? Oh, I, I think it's essential that, and we, we have to get a handle on that, the kids have to get a handle on figuring out how to do school again. I don't have a good answer to that, I, I haven't, never found anyone yet that has one. I think we all knew there was gonna be impact and I don't think anyone, we're continuing to see more and more as time goes on, how great that impact is.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not trying to paint a dismal picture, but it, it's, you know, it's gonna be every day thinking about where are we, what could we try and what can we do differently? You know, how do we engage the kids more? And I think, you know, all of us who work with kids think that if kids aren't engaged, of course, that all these other things are, are not gonna happen. So, so what do we do better? That's, our focus has to be on community, on connection, on relationship, on giving the kids a voice, on the adult conversations that we're having, where the adults are. Trying to figure out what it is they can change up to have kids be more invested, invested again, like they, they used at the level they might have been before pandemic. Um, to get them really involved in their learning. Some of today's conversations at data teams are about the, uh, you know, the fact that they don't necessarily understand the value of, why do we ask you to do that? If we just took two days of MCAS or two sessions and now two days later, we're doing another test. You know, it doesn't feel necessary to them because it's, you know, they're, it's. They're not the ones doing the analysis, so how do we get them involved in that? Having conversations about their data, all of those kinds of things to connect them to.
Stupid question to answer, I know that.
Oh, no, it's, you know, if, if I had one, I, I would make a lot of money.
Yes.
That's it?
I, yeah, just a quick comment, um. Uh, first of all, I appreciate you attending the meetings and you always bring. I probably a little bit different in that you bring a lot of data, you bring a lot of verbiage to the meetings and your slides and stuff. All day, data driven and I'm probably more of a, yeah, let's take, let's, let's try plan B or something, you know, just, you're much more thorough than I am. Um, and I think you have a very difficult job. I did write down two things that I think in, uh, Laura just touched on it is, um. The discipline or the, or the, the respect thing and the following the rules sense. I looked at those kind of fish, red lights, I was like, wow, that's a big, that's a low percentage of kids that put value on that. And then the other thing I wrote is, um, one of the questions I think was, what's, uh, most of what I learned is interesting. And I, something along those lines and then, and I thought, well, that's, that's kind of interesting. I mean, that, that's interesting to me in that. The, what I've seen at the elementary level is the kids became more engaged, the more interested they were in what they were. Kind of triggered, hey, I'm kind of into this now. And, um, and then I back into, well, we're gonna try some pilot type programs. Like maybe that, you know, maybe, maybe it all comes together, you know? Or the ball will mix it up and it comes together, but very concerned about just the, the respect thing, respect for each other, respect for teachers. And the following the rules type things, yeah.
And I think that's, that's newer since pandemic. It's almost like the time out of school caused kids to forget that they're part of a community in school. I would have it, you know, rebuilt that, yeah. So those, those two questions are, um, and they, they're important for us to, to work with kids on. So it's conversations with kids to say, you know, what changes this? And I've had some of those, just to think about the kinds of things that, that help them feel like they wanna do, what's going on in class, um, so.
Thanks. Just to that, you know, those are conversations that we need to have around our. Just to that, you know, those are conversations that we need to have around respect, right? Like that is like a community-wide conversation that needs to be had, right? We, just as a culture, have lost some sense of respect and decency, just in terms of, um, especially during the pandemic. Um, so I think it's, we have these interesting sort of expectations for our students, but we don't have the same expectations for the adults in the room.
And the kids are certainly reflected.
Totally.
Absolutely, they see it, they hear it, they say it. Um, and I think we just, we really need to remember that, that, you know, respect in general is something that we have to get back to in the in the way that we, um, interact with each other. Um, and it doesn't surprise me at all, right? That data, it was like a huge red flag for you? And I was like, yeah, it makes total sense, like.
It makes sense, but it's still a learning.
Yes, it's concerning. But it makes total sense to me that like this is trickling down to our students. And it's causing significant, um, disappear in our schools. For sure. So.
I respect you and the work you do, outstanding work, much appreciated.
Keep that.
Yeah, um, I have questions about, uh, the questionnaire as well, about a questionnaire. Um, you know, it wasn't really clear to me whether when they were asked these questions, are they answering on behalf of themselves or reflecting on what they feel the student body is, say, respecting the rules? Like, is that, like, I don't know, I I'd like to see the questionnaire because I don't know how they're composed.
Sure. Yeah. There are some, there's some of each. So there are some questions where students at this school.
Yeah.
Et cetera. And then there are other I questions, right?
Right. Yeah. Okay, and, um, similar concerns to to both, uh,
Yep.
like counterparts here about about the degradation of of respect, uh, among peers and 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 teachers and the rules. Um, I mean, pandemic is 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 like an easy answer to why that's become more of a problem. But, um, you know, you have to put it in combination, I think, with with, uh, social media. I think it's just too easy to be disrespectful online. And and that seems to be permeating into into, you know, culture amongst each other. Um, and and I think pandemic may may it it all the worse. And it can be, I think it started a long time ago. And just exasperated. I pronounced that right. Um, but yeah, it's concerning. Just wanted to remark on that and, uh, curious about the questionnaire. So, um, what is, uh, I I ask myself this question. I don't understand what it means to be asked, uh, the term social awareness. What is, what is that?
The category of social awareness is is for kids, it's about, you know, their relationship standing. So how they relate to other kids, how other kids relate to them. So those are the kinds of questions that that fall under that category.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lynn, very much.
Thanks very much.
Continue with the next, uh.
Same on the agenda is update of attendance in catchment.
You have in your packet, no, it's from me.
Yes.
Uh, describing it relating, um, uh, to someone, I should say. Uh, so so just a sort of stepping back for a second. Um, your school policy J C is about school catchment areas. So these are the areas, uh, defined around the city that determine where students go to elementary school. Having one middle school, one high school, we don't have, you know, it's citywide, obviously. Um, and in the, uh, in that school policy, uh, you call for updating school heads' catchment areas at certain certain times. And listed here, obvious, the most important one here being, um, uh, number three, opening a new school. But also overcrowded condition exists in school. You could, you could say that, you know, compared to others, uh, West Parish has some of this, okay? Um, so we'll talk about a little about that. But really, the most significant in driving is the consolidation of these cost or merits, okay? Um, and also, uh, the need to make sure that school is fully utilized, like you like all schools to be fully utilized. So the process underway, which at this point is information gathering and and information gathering. And then we'll continue with some of those launch and look at, uh, versions of the update that we're doing. Um, it's very important that this is an update. It's not an old-scale revision of any any way, shape or form of the of the catchment areas. So it's really will be around the fringes and I'll just show that in a moment to sort of the basic concept. Um, so we're going to use various forms of information. So obviously, they have the the current enrollment by school attends and catchment areas. Um, currently, we're looking at already and share that, you know, with you and the community as we go along. Um, current enrollment at each age school and also by grade level to see where we have some pinch points or where we don't. Um, city census data for ages zero to five. So what we can expect is certainly what who was born in Gloucester in zero or five years ago. That's good data, not great data, because of course people have have children and move away. If they always, you know, move and others move in, that's right. But this give us some indication of things. Um, and then, um, another piece is there, earlier, there was, I mean, there have been proposed zoning changes in in front of the school, uh, city council. Um, not many of those have been passed as it has played out. Um, in talking to the planning department, um, you know, they've explained to me that that we don't, they don't anticipate any big shifts because of those. And other places I've worked, they've had, um, you know, large, like forty B or a large, um, housing complexes being built that were, you know, uh, you know, mixed use, mixed size, mixed, you know, um, mixed bedrooms and all sorts of things. Um, Gloucester have that and it didn't work at this point, um, that we didn't look at. If you had another halyard, we'd be looking that closely, but we don't at this point. And many zone changes and zone changes that have been adopted recently, which are very minimal. Um, it's, we don't expect that to generate, you know, mass numbers. Oh, the other, oh, sorry, the last piece I actually is on the slide, but we also look at, you know, previous, uh, enrollment projections. Those are a few years old, but we definitely did what I think it was in the last, did one in for, uh, for the building project. As far as the state process, we're we're working that too. We have criteria for updating school catchment, uh, areas and and happy to get input on this or conversational feedback on this. Uh, run and maximize enrollment in the new school building, okay? Uh, target relief to any schools, relation to space and school and class size. Another, uh, reason for updating the catchment areas is to maintain class size guidelines that the school committee, uh, you know, as supposed for. Um, always want to do our best to avoid creating socioeconomic disproportionality in school assignments. So, you know, so there is, they're all, you can, they'll never be able to in in really almost any community without cherry-mandering, you know, districts in really funky way to have balance, you know, that could, you know, in any, in any sort of, uh, across many indicators, okay? Specific socioeconomic disproportionality here. And the reason that we don't want to get that too out of whack is because there's just, you know, um, no, on many levels, I would say this, uh, in a way that makes sense. Um, there may more challenges for those families who are lower on the socioeconomic, um, uh, levels, uh, in just with life, honestly. And that includes, uh, IDH as well. So, um, higher needs typically not always. Um, we want to make sure we know real range of differences between schools. So we'll try to balance as best we can. Um, try to, again, this goes back to cherry manger, don't have it, don't want to have, try not to have just school, school catchment areas that are bizarrely shaped or extended too far. Um, we have some challenge on that because we have Plum Cove, which is in a very four, far north. Right? Or, I think it's used in my geography, certainly, I've lost her and water everywhere, so it throws me off. Um, so, but anyway, um, so there's, it's also considering walkability and transportation, you know, and busing, that's what I'm thinking. How do you, you know, not having buses, you know, go over very large sloths of of, you know, land and traffic and so stuff. Um, the most important, and then, you know, so the the top three or four, the most important ones here, you know, other ones we'll consider. Another very important one is second from the bottom there. It's like the minimizing impact of a change of, uh, change of current students or families. And the notion there is we don't anticipate telling people, you know, you know, who are, have a third grader in fourth grade or child who went to a different school, okay? We don't anticipate that happening and we don't intend to do that. And and we afford that in Grand Park, okay? So that, what that means though is over time, the the enrollment gets to where we want it to be. When we're when we're making adjustments, okay? Uh, not a perfect science. Um, another thing we could consider, but but in May, you know, May, uh, developed sort of down the road, really is, um, many schools use buffer zones, meaning you have a, uh, a zone, you know, a catchment area that is for a specific school. Um, but where borders another school's catching area, you might have a buffer zone where the students who live in that buffer zone may be assigned to either school. And that gives you the flexibility, if you're having larger enrollment or growth enrollment, um, to sort of balance that necessary. So one school doesn't happen to, you know, get way out of whack and be quite crowded, and the other one's not. You know, I don't know, I don't think we need to develop those right now, um, because I mean, the future, um, because we're not really, you know, we we have good enrollment here, solid enrollment, it's it's steady, but grow a little bit. Um, but we don't have, you know, sort of rapid growth. Um, just to show you what I mean, this is on the left are are all the catchment zones, okay, to five. You'll see that, see a couple of things. One, obviously green, so you see the the colors, green is West Parish. West Parish is covering a lot more territory because as we all know, there's a, uh, just the the houses, the housing is just further afield, okay? Um, as opposed to if you forget, you know, vets being very small, um, area. West Parish is also a bigger school, whereas the original, the vets, you know, zones, smaller school, but that, you know, a denser area of the city. So it's obviously smaller. Um, the other thing we'll notice is that the light yellow is Plum Cove is separated by a chunk around Beeman, which is purple, okay? You can also see, you know, the Beeman purple goes down, you know, deep into the downtown, a- around Centennial, you know? So, uh, that, and that is just the nature of having a school, a Plum Cove, which doesn't have very many people living around it. Many, very, very many students at this point, okay? And obviously, the density of of the cities closer to that downtown, right? Um, and I think when this was originally created, not wanting to have, uh, Beeman not in its in its school zone. We, you know, Beemen's are not having, not having school, um, in a Plum Cove, you know, um, uh, catcher. That just doesn't make sense, right? Um, kids are walking, walking past the school to get on the bus to go to the most. So that's why you see the way it's constructed. Um, what's likely to happen, and this is, you know, pretty obvious, is we'll make some, the on the right is is a zoom in of the downtown area. Um, and, you know, I think Centennial's here, that sort of thing, just to just to orient people. Um, the country is right about here, okay? Um, is there'll be adjustments down here, right? Uh, we're not there just to know where, um, but that's likely where their adjustments are are to happen in some way, shape or form. And again, not to move people forward to the next. Um, we'll give folks that option. They want to, they want to go to a school that's as close to where they are or is brand new, that that's, they can do that if they're in the catchment area. But that's where we'll make the adjustments. And what we tend to do is to bring to you in one of your August meetings, sort of the first draft. That's why you'll have to understand that instead of, you know, just the public being aware of it. Um, get input and suggestion, the guidance in the, in the, uh, early, in in September, make the final decision. We want to have both the naming of the school and the catchment areas set, uh, very big in the beginning of October. Um, so people have that, you know, for West. Question, anything I can add to that?
Don't actually think important to say, you start.
I know, I don't, I just have a question. How are we, uh, how are we going to communicate all of this to families?
Uh, loudly, often and respectfully.
Um.
Um, uh, I I I, I mean, I I don't know yet. But I mean, were, do you mean like the process, what's happening or after that?
I mean, before your time here.
Yeah.
The only way to find out your school, if you lived downtown, was to call Captain Verga, who used to run the buses. The school system was not the source. The administration was not the source of that information.
So so, so, or when since registered, that was the source. You know, do you mean like when when folks maybe move in?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
So like people will say to me like, how do I find out which school I'm zoned for? And I don't have an answer, right?
So so what we'll have, our website, you know, is very clearly listing, you know, not not only by, because obviously, because they, Washington Street, very long street, right?
Yeah.
It's 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 sometimes spoke, I mean, at some point, broken down by address, right? So we'll have that sort of thing, yeah. It'll it'll, uh, it it needs to be, I've seen sort of, uh, lookup databases.
Yeah.
Which are actually, uh, quite, quite confusing. I mean, they're a good tool in many ways, but they're also, you know, confusing and and, but, um, I think, uh, pretty straightforward listing. It's part of the best way to grow or something, search.
That'll be a significant, that didn't exist, especially for downtown.
Doesn't.
It doesn't exist really for downtown, especially for those areas that are sort of cut up.
The listing, what if it doesn't, I'm sorry, what's it need to?
Like that easily accessible, accessible information on your district.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like what is your assigned district is not.
Yeah, it will also have a map, you know, and so, I mean, I tend to have a couple of ways people can can can, you know, find that. Yeah, pretty well, I understand. And then make sure realtors, where to find it, everybody can find it.
What did you say?
We make sure realtors can find it.
Oh, yeah, well, that's, that was actually my next comment, is that realtors will often say the wrong district.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it would be good to have that conversation.
Yeah. I will, we'll move there once we do the update, you know, and make sure we're, uh.
I I just want to say, I I met somebody at work and we were, they were talking about Beeman and Plum Cove and how I worked with somebody, he has to drive past his friend's house where their student goes to Beeman to get to his kid's school. And and that explains everything. I just want to thank you for, like.
Oh, for me, yeah, right.
Oh, I see how that happened. And I couldn't understand it, like, I don't get it. Okay, but now I get it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And and just so you know, we we will never share this publicly, but we have every student and they've been fairly mapped, you know, uh, on, you know, across the city. We don't share that publicly, obviously, because you've identified where students live, right? And what grade they're in, like, we've never shared that in years. But it's a tool we're using to understand how to, uh, what the impact is of making changes, okay? Um, and and so you can see just, you know, the different change, different densities of where students probably go when we work that. It's just, it's just, you know, so clear, so it's, but but again, uh, we won't share that, but it's it's pretty obvious, we want to have that. It's a cherry. All right, ready to move on?
Okay. Uh, yeah, next order of businesses, uh, super.
So school safety and security update, so want to give folks an update. I think we gave you an update in the fall, so when you're doing some, um, safety drills. And those, uh, so just want to go through a couple of slides and areas. Obviously, always important to the families and our staff, um, you know, it's something that's on our mind. We may talk a lot about a lot of it, um, you know, or, uh, you know, but it's always on our mind. Care to do that and it's almost always worth being done. Um, so the the probably the first and foremost, uh, in, uh, sorry, first and most important area on safety and security is knowing our students' families well. This is often, I mean, I like to highlight it because it's really the, it's our first line of safety and security. And and what I think is great about Gloucester is that, um, a lot of our staff know our families and have known our families. And, um, and and our neighbors are their, are our families in our schools, which is great. But a a piece of that is we have lots of level of staff, all, you know, clinical staff. So adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, psychologists, teachers and our parent professionals, our principals, assistant principals and other school administrators and our school re, and I'll I'll mention. So let's start with those. And a major part of their job is knowing our students well. What's going well for them, what's difficult for them to struggle with, okay? Um, and that's important to levels. We can identify kids who might be in distress for any number of reasons, okay? We can support them and and work with our families. But also because of those relationships that really import us, um, we actively work on. When kids see something, they tell us almost, not I would say all the time, but so many times. Um, you know, a level of concern a student might have because something they saw on social media, they will tell a teacher, they will tell a guidance counselor, okay? Um, something happened to a student or is happening to a student, they tell us, okay? Uh, they tell a staff member, they tell an adult, okay, who knows that, who knows them well. That's just crucial in all of this in terms of, um, helping our students, for our students, but also knowing what risks or threats might be, okay? Uh, and that's not only school students learning about things that are happening inside our schools. Then maybe students tell us about these things that are happening outside of school, with our students or with others, okay? Um, another piece here is school resource officers. I, you've heard me talk about this quite a bit, but I I'm just really, we work, our school resource officers, so this is, I mean, the specific people. Officer Michael Scola and Officer Peter Tara, um, who are our primary school resource officers. Work very, very well with us and our and our kids and our fans. They know them well, they've been with us for a long time, they grew up here. Um, and so they're also resource, and kids go to them, just like they might go to a teacher or guidance counselor and tell them, talk them, use them as a resource. So they're very valuable in knowing this, and then, of course, they have access to, you know, any, in any certain, any specific situations or that are necessary. You know, have a whole police office, police force hard behind them, so, which allows you to go to the next one, which are preparedness. So a big piece of our preparedness happens every, every year in the summertime, we're annual meeting with police and fire leadership. So just last summer, we were in here with one of the lieutenants who handles emergency response. With our near team, talking about drills and preparation and training. We also have, so we have a summer meeting with myself and some of our district leaders, as well as the police and fire chief and some of our local leaders as well. And a lot of things happen in that, we prepare, prepare for drills, we review changes of first responder protocols. So something that's happened over many years, unfortunately, is that first responders, I mean, the field really learns from different incidents that happened, happened around the country. And so, and they will change protocols from time to time. And so part of those meetings are us learning what the changes are and incorporating with it. We also share any updates about school emergency plans with the police department, and fire have those on file. So we have, you know, detailed emergency plans for each school, kind of number of areas, and then, as I said, also part of that's preparedness and fills. So that's part of the preparedness with the, with our emergency personnel. The other place, place is regular communication with our colleagues at the police department about things that are coming up, that are bubbling up. Maybe it's school based, it might be something that's local, a, a risk, a threat, a concern, might be something that's happening on social media. You know, nationally, that sort of thing, that's a risk or a threat. And so we're in regular communication on many, on those levels, and that might be principal talking, or a teacher talking, the school resource, resource officer, all the way to me talking to you. And I just want folks to know that those are very open lines of communication, and, and also, it's great support. I, there's, there's just, just a great one relation, that's, that's, I, I, I want folks to know that isn't always the case, that is, that is notable, to kind of say that. We can just pause there, we're going into training facilities in a moment, but want to pause there, see if there's any questions. In terms of training, so the first one's really important, so we have fire drills, evacuation drills, and also drills for intruders, okay? Those have changed over time, over the years, developmentally appropriate is what's crucial, okay? We can speak in ways and tell high school students and different things than we tell elementary school students, okay? Which, what you do when you're teaching or when you're coaching or anything, right, that makes a lot of sense. And, but we're also very, very aware that any of it can really throw a student or staff out of the context. And so we're very conscious of how, what language we use, have changed our, the language we use in terms of preparing staff over the years. And have changed language that we use in terms of talking to kids about it as well. Especially the high school staff will typically inform, will usually give folks a heads up, something's coming, okay? But at the high school, typically, there's instructions that are happening, you know, with students in advance, that sort of thing, that are clear. Because the drills that we might do at high school are a little more complex than the drills we might do at middle school, that sort of thing. An important piece on that is that whenever we're doing drills, whether it's fire drill or intruder drill. The police or fire have a team on site who are observing and watching, seeing how this go, and they give, give us feedback on, on how well that was done, and what we can. So then the last piece is facilities, so as you know, which is to tell the public as well, the entry to security upgrades in O'Malley, JHS, to match what exists in West Parish. Those are complete, new consolidate BTS building will have similar safety features at the entryway and around the building. And then one very important piece, really crucial piece, is that ensure that all doors are working properly in the locker in school hours. One thing we've really, just, just recently sort of raised to a very high level is, and have changed our protocols on, is if we, if there's a. Any non-working exterior doors for any reason, that could be electronically, that could be just a lock, that could be, that could be fixture work, whatever it is, okay? And any principal, we're hears about those, as soon as they hear about it, they contact me, this is directed to you immediately, and we escalate that, so it happened that day. And that, a recent example of that was just here at the high school on Friday, and we've got a half an hour, you know, we had folks on site fix it. So that's just a simple change that we can, you know, can do in our domain. And then always continue to remind folks that propping doors open is just absolutely not allowed, it can't be tolerated. And it's something that happens at schools, unfortunately, and it's now, we're making it clear to staff. That any doors are propped open, the propping of doors is subject to progressive discipline for all employees. That's, that's a, just a new thing we're putting in place, like right now, or this week, after propping door or union partners. And then part of that also then is making sure that we have good access to the doors we need to. And so some change will happen on that, whether that's, you know, keys to folks or whether it's key card access. So I'll give you one example here, that we're working on right now is at the athletics hallway, at the athletics hallway, athletics hallway here in, in the, in the high school. That, that has key card access at the end of that, at the end of that hallway. So there's some change that'll happen on that, that we're working on, but just want to make sure we escalate any, through that doors, you know, really quickly.
Next question specifically about the athletic door. I know this is like specific to when the school day is in session, but that athletic door, when there are events or practices, is wide open. And so I'm wondering if we can have just a conversation with the athletic director on how we can better manage that.
Yeah, so, so, and there are other conversations for, you know, how to use the doors at, at, at West Parish? Because the way they were designed, or which ones to use as primary access, and the way that actually turns out it's best to use them in terms of primary access. You know, so there has to be some adjustments at, at, at a door there, okay, so, but that, those are the conversations now we have to have in order to make sure that. And the key card access at, at, at that particular door here is, is one of the steps in there. And then also it's talking, talking to a principal, a flag director, you know, a food service manager, how they need to use the door, you know, to make sure we. It's locked, but then we can have folks who need access to that can get access when, when, when they.
So I guess specifically, that door is used by students coming in and going from the athletic building in off hours, and so it's often open.
Right, no, I understand that, yeah, I get that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay, so, because they, I'm assuming they're not going to have two card access.
And, and that's why I'm talking to, to understand exactly how is it used, and to what extent, and what, not only what, except like. I mean, what ways can we make it so it's secure?
Yeah.
You know, it has to be secure, but understanding the use of it, right, and, and, and so.
Okay, thanks.
Okay?
I just wanted to mention something that had happened a few years ago, where there was a medical situation in our schools. And the term that was used was sheltering in place, and I think through that we learned that the more appropriate term is learning in place. Like, you know, keep kids in their classrooms, a medical emergency can be dealt with, you know, because, because a term like sheltering in place sets up in the water.
Yes.
But learning in place, everybody, right? So I think all these learning things to kind of keep anxiety down and be as informed as we can for families and things, um.
Yes, and, and that's, that's, that's a really good example of how, you know, protocol change, language change on this, because we learn more and, you know, and. And just that example of learning in place, with, with, that example of a medical emergency, that's related to two things, right? One, for office privacy of an individual, and make sure they get the right care, but also that it can be very, you know, alarming or disturbing, or, or just, you know, nerve wracking. For any child, for any, any age person to, you know, see a medical emergency, right, so we're thinking of both sides, right? All right, going to more, some more else stuff, but this is, um, yeah, I've gone two straight weeks of my favorite data. Pecal matter, wastewater testing results, you can see downward trend in Gloucester, which is great. And that is, as it always does, is reflected in our total case count here, we can see over the past two weeks, we have nine total cases. Across our, across our schools, still keeping track of things the same way we have, you know, since, well, I guess, since. From this year, when, when we, when we, you know, sort of really instituted the onsite, I'm sorry, the take on testing, as well as pool testing. There's just the, the blow by, well, we've had weeks since October of total cases, so you see nine were essentially at our lowest state, you know. Which, you know, was matched in early March and matched in, you know, in, in early fall, but as we had hoped, you know, quite low. Still cases popping, as everyone knows, there's been cases popping up and, up and down, you know, here, we hear that, and then I, I read in the papers, wordsworth. New England is going down in general, but there's still places that matches, which are pretty high, but that's not the case in Gloucester. This is just, as I've been showing you, sort of the regular, the testing, and, you know, odd is still consistent in how many folks were testing each week. There's the actual number of tests, and then you see the positive founds, positive found, positives found this week so far are a total of five. Last piece is just as, to check in, let me, any questions about COVID and the case count, okay, all good news, yes. Last piece is the student evaluation process, just to check in, because it says here, June 8th, check in on progress, discuss process. Any questions about that for, for you, for you folks to discuss? And then you have a deadline as well, but that's, that's your deadline, not mine. But any, just want to, as we said, give you the opportunity to check in and see how things go.
Yeah, and I did have a question of clarification of the forms, and on page three of the form. It seemed, you know, it has kind of blank lines as two goals, and we need to fill, that will be filled in on the template. So that they'll reflect the superintendent's goals line by line, so that it's clear on the evaluation form where we put that information.
So we'll get a new template?
Yeah, we'll update the template that's on, in the drive.
Okay.
You can just go to the drive, and so Kathy, Stephanie, I will just update that tomorrow morning. And it, it's, it's essentially the same, except for that, that, that's that one, sorry.
That's, yeah, right, but the, is the, I've been accessing that from your email.
Yeah, me too.
That form, not Ben's whole drive of.
Right.
Evidence, but is, where, where on the drive would that be?
It's in the same folder, although those, so I, I can show it to you.
It's the one that he sent. And what I usually, what I've always done is download the form, so I'm working on my own version of the form, right? So I would then just, you know, take the new form and download that form to work locally on my computer. And if there's an update like that, then I would either figure out if I want to copy paste the information into my form or take the new form and start.
Looking.
And things.
So, so I'll be pasted into the new form.
I'm seeing where you are then.
Yeah, so, so, shoot, let's see if I can zoom in here, so, just so, is this the folder you have access to?
Yeah.
There's the evidence folder in that, there's the goals and evidence, which is, which is just that, the sheet I gave you, with the link to it, okay? That's just a copy of my goals, the original document, this is the rubric, and then this is the, some of the evaluation form. Which you can download as a, as a Word document and fill it in as you. I'm a little concerned that, so what you emailed earlier on, did you, did you reemail this one? Because remember, there, there's this.
You said, you, you said it was the rubrics, which was updated, not.
Oh, you're right, that's not the form, that, the form, the form is always the right, so the form that Kathy emailed you earlier on is, is the same form.
Okay.
And that is also right, so if you're using that from the email, you're, you're bound to.
Wait, can you, oh, but, okay, got it.
But you haven't changed it yet.
No, right, and, and what we were gonna, we're just gonna essentially copy and paste.
Those goals, yes.
My goal, the goals that you, you know, that we agreed upon into this page, right?
Right, okay, okay.
That's all, that, that's the only change you're going to stick.
Yeah.
You also might just, so, so that's clear, right, in terms of just this one page will change, nothing else is going to change. What I will do, I did for last year was, I actually specifically pointed out to some of the indicators. As focus indicators, okay, all right, I didn't do that this year, I'll just show you what I did, so I'm not just speaking. What I, I think you can see this on your screen, that just gave you the standards that were, that were connected to these goals.
I see.
Okay, so the standard is a high, you know, is, is, is these, you know, broader categories, and so tomorrow morning, and that just, that just, you know. It helps you connect the dots in terms of the specifics of any of these indicators that I think is really connected to, you know, the work, what we're doing. It's not essential, I think it's going to be helpful to you, so.
So, just, can I ask a question? So on the page you're on right now.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at this focus indicator, check if yes, at the bottom of.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll check those in some way.
So that's going to be on the new document?
Yeah, it'll, it'll be, it'll, it'll be this, you'll, you'll just.
It'll be this document with updates.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, 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 yeah.
Awesome, that's intense.
You know, I just gotta figure out how to check those these things.
Yeah, I was supposed to do that by erasing that and then.
Yeah.
Yeah, anyway.
This form is really.
Awesome, isn't it?
I'm sorry, my head exploded when I saw it.
Do you think somebody would have made it, but it's your case.
Right, so, right, because, because these are checkboxes, right?
They're supposed to be.
But you can, you can delete them and just put your own X.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I think I just.
No, I highlighted that last year.
Yeah.
I highlighted.
All the works.
Anyway, on the Mac, Mac is really challenging, use this.
Yeah.
Really, okay, what I, I, I'm, I can say that is.
You're going to have to do it.
Okay, and then along that same, along this topic, we need to negotiate with the superintendent for his next contract by the end of the school year. So I would like to suggest that there's a personnel meeting on Monday, June 26th, where we discuss that. And then a full school committee meeting on the 28th, should be on one night of the year.
So the Monday in June is the 27th?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
And I'm unavailable, so I'm to.
You're available. The 27th and 29th.
So Maria's not available, and Laura's unavailable, so.
You can work through that.
Okay.
Not, not.
Not on camera.
Struggle, okay?
Oh, wait, what time would it be, the personnel meeting? I just.
Why is that meeting?
Have to be in Denver by seven fifteen, so I'd have to leave here by quarter seven, I think.
Yeah, additional meeting soon as the 20.
29th.
Yeah, no, I don't know why I wrote down 28th.
Turn it, it says.
I said my anniversary was the 29th. I said my anniversary was the 29th. I said my anniversary was the 29th.
Trina called and said her anniversary.
Did she confirm that, correlation? I'm hesitant, I'm hesitant to give Trina any of your cutting information, just for the record, okay?
Okay, so anyway, we can figure out, but we, we do need to have a meeting that week, so we can, you know, fire that out, to make sure everybody's available. And Alyssa would like to say something.
No, it's just a suggestion that we do it as a school committee as a whole, an executive session at our last Wednesday of the month meeting. Because we're all going to weigh in on it anyway.
On the 22nd?
No, I think, don't we have a meeting the last Wednesday of the month as well?
No.
No.
The 22nd. I thought we did, I thought we were doing something that week, so if you have a personnel meeting, when is the school committee approving it? In August?
I'll follow it, two days later.
So, so that would be the last Wednesday, so we're trying to figure out if, if, to have a meeting on the last Wednesday, or is it scheduled now? Does that make sense?
I thought the personnel meeting was the last Monday of the month.
That's what we're trying to figure out, yeah, yes, that's what we're trying.
You have it that Monday, the school committee isn't gonna get it until when, we're not meeting in July, so it wouldn't be approved until August.
I'm suggesting we meet, we schedule the Monday and the Wednesday, the Monday, Tuesday.
Okay, so that's what I thought, so I'm suggesting that you don't have just a personnel meeting and have the full school committee meeting on the Wednesday, and we can do it in executive session, because everyone weighs in on the superintendent's contract.
So one meeting?
Yeah, one meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I'm hearing that there's struggles for the Monday attendance and with Maria and Laura. So, since we're all gonna have a say in this, it just would make sense to do it that Wednesday as a group.
Well, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Tuesday. Or Tuesday, if people are okay on a Tuesday.
Sure.
I'm not, but I'm not telling Monday, Tuesday, so you guys can
You're right.
Why not Wednesday, why are we doing Tuesday?
No, Wednesday, Wednesday, Wednesday can, can, can be, can
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. How about Thursday? But wait, for an executive session, then not, will you be part of it or not part of it?
I didn't, I didn't, I heard that it's something
Right, but not the initial, right?
Right. Yeah, well, we'll
We'll, we'll
We'll figure that out, okay?
Yeah, but just everyone has a heads up that, that, that's what you're trying to accomplish, and then, and then, more details, sure, you know, as soon as possible.
Okay, anyway, it's, it's right, so. Thank you for your superintendent's report. Okay, um, there have been no subcommittee meetings since our last school committee meeting, so there are no reports. Um, under action, we have approval of policies, which is the second reading of the revised attendance policy file JE. And I know the superintendent and assistant superintendent have done a lot of work to kind of organize and make it in a format meeting.
You want us to present what change, I would, I would, Greg, summarize, just change the main, which are more in format than substance, in fact, they are all in format rather than substance?
Yeah. Yeah, they're, well, not entirely, there's some, there's some content that is new, um, all right, one second.
Do you need to share?
I'm not sure if I need to share, but I, uh, everybody has copies, okay? Um, the first thing that I did was to pull out all of things that are related to, um, to mass general law and are required, and those are all now in policy JE. And those include a very brief introduction, but then, uh, under the headings to, uh, state laws governing student attendance, that's where we see, uh, parent guardian responsibilities, uh, school notification requirements, and then Sorry. Uh, new content, um, I, I noted in some policies, but not in others across the district, um, absence of students due to religious beliefs. Um, I put that in, ran it by our attorney, and said it was absolutely appropriate to be in there. Uh, habitually truant and CRA and dropping out of school, the legal references are all at the bottom. And that constitutes the three-page policy JE that is strictly about all the relevant, uh, attendance laws.
And then just the JE, it's like the
JE is what initially, uh, I thought I was thinking of would be an exhibit, but it still goes in the manual as a, um, in the policy manual. But we can think of it as the exhibit, that is, the guide for, um, creating the entries in the handbooks, which you will, you approve annually. So you have a chance to take a look at it, the product of the results of the attendance teams, as they put the operational procedures and protocols together. So you'll see that file JE dash E is the guidance for creating operational procedures and protocols for inclusion in student and parent handbooks. And this includes the relevant information from the original policy that creates the case for, and the guiding principles, and the goals, and some of the requirements to guide those teams. So they will refer to these when creating their, um, their, uh, protocols and procedures for their handbooks, which you will then have an opportunity to approve as part of the handbook approval. This year, that will happen separately, because they will be creating that piece, but in this, in the future, in the spring, you'll see a part of that handbook. So this guide includes terminology, um, guidance, um, the multi-tiered system of support, information that is not necessarily something you need in your, your primary tenants' policy relative, relevant to the laws. And then you'll note that I added on the, at the very end, um, the two paragraphs, operational procedure and protocol, protocol guide should be completed for school committee approval and inclusion in student parent handbooks. This year, we're shooting for the, the August twelfth meeting, that'll be the last one that will allow them to include it in, in the digital handbooks. And then in the subsequent years, it will be part of the regular annual approval. And, uh, final line is that the operational procedure and protocol guides should be designed at the school level to comply with cluster school committee attendance policy JE, so they should make sure that when using these principles, uh, practices, uh, and goals, that they are also making sure that it complies with the file JE. So that's why we decided to approach this challenge, where there's a lot of procedural, um, protocol information that should go in the handbooks, but we wanna memorialize that and make sure that, that that is followed when they create.
Thank you for that, that one, so, so JE, the, the laws
Yep.
Will become, once we have our policy, that will become the, like, once those policies are written by the attendance teams
The procedures.
Procedures.
Procedures, right, that's, yeah.
Right, so that, those procedures will be part of JE?
Um, JE on July first will be the school committee's policy around attendance, and that covers, that covers, legally covers us, and, and we're in compliance with the laws.
And our procedures.
We have to have that policy at the school district level in the school committee handbook, so, uh, um, policy manual. So JE becomes policy effective July first, regardless of anything else that happens, that policy is there.
And then, and just a, just a, so, and, and the policy, as, as everyone knows, laid out the framework for the procedures and work, right? And I want to point out the two, you know, just two, you know, very important pieces in, in, in the policy, JE, okay? One, all the state law, okay, obviously, but the other piece is on the first page underneath the numbered list, one through four, okay? I mean, introduction, yes, but particularly the paragraph right after the vote list, that begins, the Goshville Schools and Policy, operating to establish a tier system of support. That's the basis of all the, of the, of the shift in approach that we're doing. Not, and the shift in, in the approach, in the original version, the first one was all laid out very specifically here. You see the specifics in, in JE, the procedures, like the framework for it, as, as, as the policy is that paragraph really. What's important for that is that, um, the school committee then is saying, this is the direction we want it to be done. And in, in that, in that introduction.
The procedures, specific procedures that come out of the attendance teams?
You will vote, uh, because there, those are put in the handbook.
And those go in the handbook, they don't?
And you vote on them in that way.
Okay.
Got it, thank you.
And they have been there for, for years, that's where they end up. And we've also had, um, you know, they, they're sort of, the, the foundational policy has always been in the school committee policy, uh, manual as well. So we're, we're continuing that pattern, but with JE that provides
Right.
more clear guidance when you're developing your annual, um, policy, your procedures and protocols in manuals.
Okay, so in that description, we have the policy, let's discuss the policy first. Oh, Melissa?
Thank you, so I just have a question, um, so the exit, the JE, will that go away once the policy and procedures are in place? Will that incorporate the language necessary into the, the policy, the policy and procedures, not the policy, the procedures? In other words, we're not gonna have JE, JE in the procedures, correct? We should just have the policy and then the procedures, once they're
My, my, uh, in, the intention that I have here is, that we have here is that the JE and JE will stay in the school committee policy manual. And the actual procedures that are, and they, they need to stay there, so that each year, if, as a school revisits their actual nuts and bolts policies, this will happen so many days, uh, these are the kinds of things that parents need to do, that those could always have a reference until it's changed at the committee, school committee level, uh, both in the JE and JE. So those will both remain at the district policy manual level. And then the operational procedures and protocols have yet to be developed, and those may be subject to, um, modification within the parameters that are outlined here in these actual, uh, the JE and JE, that those will continue to guide the development of the, the detail level that happened, that's gonna appear in the handbooks.
So Greg, let me ask you this, um, great, this is great work, I, I'm just trying to follow process here. So when you read policy manuals in all, in all school districts, they're set up the same, you know, they all have the same policy lettering. Um, do, uh, do we have other policies that have an exhibit, as you say, in our manual? Because that doesn't, doesn't seem the norm in all the policy manuals I've read, because I've read a lot of different school manuals for different reasons in the past. And I've never seen exhibits in a policy manual. So I'm just trying to make sure that we're consistent with the rules that are set out as you develop a policy manual. I understand the importance of the language and why, what the intent is, and that's why I asked, my question was, when we do get to the procedures, because those are common to be in policy manuals, will the EE be incorporated into the procedures? So that, so that it captures the intention and the procedures? Or are we doing something different in our policy manual that other schools don't?
When you're
To get at.
When you're saying, will JE appear in the procedures, are you, are you saying, will that appear in the handbooks? Because that's where the procedures are going to appear.
No, so the, so we have a policy manual that's online.
Yep.
And that's where policies and procedures are as well. You know, that's, that, that's our policy and procedure manual. I'm not too concerned about the handbooks, because that's a reference for students, but we have a policy manual that's on file. And it's set up similar as other school districts, that the As, the Bs, the Cs, they're all the same in all the school districts. And what I'm saying is, in other manuals, because I've read many, they have the policy, and then they give the procedures to that policy on some occasions. So I'm not talking about handbooks right now, I'm talking about our policy manual. So will the JE dash E turn into the policy, the, I'm sorry, I keep saying policy, the procedures to the policy JE?
I
Once it's developed.
A little bit, uh, I'm a little confused, because the directive at the last meeting, as I understood it, was that the policy was incorporating both policy and procedures, and that those needed to be, uh, those need to be separated or removed, so the work was done to, to do that and separate it in what I felt was the most logical way of sort of separating law and procedure. I see no reason why JE and JE dash E can't coexist in a policy manual, it's not, it's not written as a, it doesn't say exhibit, it doesn't, it's, it's a, it's a, it incorporates things that could, can, could be contained in a, in a single policy. We do have policies in our own handbook that mix policy and protocols and procedures, we have a number of those. So, uh, this seemed to be an approach that would sort of logically separate, uh, some of those procedural kinds of things from the, the, the laws themselves.
Yeah, so let me see that, Greg, because this is excellent work, I'm not saying what you did is different than what I expected, this is what I expected. Um, so I see that JE is our policy, that, that is the policy, and you labeled the, um, the backup to it as JE dash E. So that's what's throwing me off, I understand it's separate, but what I'm asking is, will that, the second part of it, become the language in the procedures? Or another question to ask is, do we have this type of supporting document with any other of our policies?
Cause I've never We definitely have it for building use, we have our building use policy and our building use procedures.
Right, and that's how we have it with bullying policy as well, right, that, that's very common. But this is, this JE dash E isn't procedures yet, because we haven't been developed, and I'm assuming that it's gonna turn into the procedures once the work is done.
So I, so I think, I think there's a, there's a both and here, I think, Melissa, I think you're right on that, that JE isn't, uh, a typical procedures document, something, something a little bit different, right? Sort of in between, right?
Right, because we're not there yet.
Right, so, so, um, and that, that's why there's a little confusion here, I believe, right, because it's a little bit in between, no big deal. Um, but I, but I do think that when we have the procedures, so as, as you've heard Greg say, the next step on this, once you get approval on this, the next step is to actually develop the operating procedures, right? We can incorporate that into the policy manual, um, just, you know, if we need to, or we want to, if you want to, the school committee, and we'll also have that in, in the handbooks as well, which you also vote on, so, so I think, I think it's important to have, and I think, you know, Greg, tell me if you agree on this one, to have JE as it is in the policy manual, it really sets out, you know, it's sort of like, you know, just on this, because attendance is like really complicated at many levels, it sort of sets out the all parts of it, you know, so that, that, and I don't know if that's okay with you or, um, Melissa, like folks just to hear, but that's what I'm saying, is like, we have, you know, all of it ultimately into the, uh, policy manual, um, and, uh, and then also the procedures that are still to be developed in there as well as the, the handbooks, a way to vote for it.
Yeah, and if these, if the procedures get more firmed up, as they firmed up, this may get revoked to be, to reflect what, what's decided.
It could be vote that, right, you also vote during, for the handbooks as well, yeah.
Right. But this week, tonight, we're approving the framework and the guidance that lays out that
If you want to incorporate what the attendance team's doing, you decide that that shouldn't, that should be more than just in the handbooks, that, that's fine.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so let's just take up the policy, does anybody have any questions, comments on the policy? Because it is the language we had in our, um, previous school committee meeting, and it's a different format. Melissa?
I just have one suggestion, and it's not changing the language, it's just changing the order of paragraphs, which is on the last page in page three, under, um, the habitually truant students and C, CRA. When I read this, it just, it makes sense to do, the first paragraph stay the same, and then that third paragraph become the second paragraph, because you're introducing what a CRA is, and then the language to follow that talks about whether the school district will file one or not. But other than that, I thought, I think it's excellent work.
That objection, okay? Okay, um, I just have one thing on the previous page at the top, parent guardian responsibilities. Calling the school at a designated number at a designated time, should it be and designated time? That's a semantic thing, but the other thing is, it says, as established by the school committee to report a child's absence and reason for it. We, school committee, could not really dictate the times that the schools themselves want those notifications.
Right, so do, so then
So I would end it, or, you know, designated time as established by So I would end it, or, you know, designated time as established by, I would say superintendent. Because you would then direct your-
Yeah, right. Would direct the principals to determine that and have that be a handbook.
Yeah, it's an operational-
Yeah.
Okay.
So just say, so, so, on school, there's a time, and, and designated number and time, and there's a time as established.
Yeah. And you want, you want to say to report a child's absence in reason for it, if you like.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading?
So moved. As amended?
As amended.
Do we need to waive another reading of it? This was our second. So, I think we need to do two, you know?
No, I think, because, because it's an amended, because it's an amended policy, we don't do two cold readings. Right, Melissa?
We can, we can do a motion to waive the reading.
Okay. So we want to do that first before we take the other?
And we, we waive the reading. Second.
Maria, roll bubble.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Jefferson, Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Back to the other motion that was moved in the second bit. Any discussion? Okay.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Jefferson, Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes.
So now we have the attendance policy procedures, J E dash E. Does anyone have questions or changes? I see none. I have one question. Well, comment, I guess. Underneath the attendance failure policy, the second paragraph, it says, the current attendance failure policy at Gloucester High School will be eliminated. I think we should say is eliminated. Because once we adopted it, I don't know. You tell me. This is guidance, right? So when will it be, or it should say, will be eliminated effective August?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's will be because it goes into, I think we had discussed by the end of the first term.
Right. So will be effective what, during, for 2020?
Yeah.
So, but we'll, we'll be eliminated by second term of the, of the, of the 2022 school year?
Yeah, I think that's what we had in originally. I'm not sure
Do you?
where that went. But, yeah, that's the intention.
Do we hamstring ourselves by putting a time on it? I just, in the interest of-
You also create a deadline.
Right.
I, I think also this is important for parents, too.
Right. So it's both, right. So then if it doesn't happen. We could create a deadline. Or do you want to say before?
According to the principle, that's a deadline that's intended to meet.
Oh, okay. Right. Okay. So the amendment is just, will be eliminated by-
End of the first term of the 2022, 2023 school year. It's like, end of the first term. I'm using my own term. It's not a picture. Two, twenty, twenty, school year.
Okay.
We use the language, end of the first quarter of the 22, 23 year-
We said end of the first term.
End of the first term of the 2022, 2023-
Right. But what I'm saying is, in that exact same paragraph, we have something else that says, end of the first quarter of the 22, 23 school year. So let's just be consistent.
So, but that's a, that's a different piece, because I think it remains probably, it's okay.
It's a different piece, but is it part of the same timing?
No, actually, Greg, you mentioned this, and the second part, which is creating the operational committee, develop trauma-informed engagement protocols, that, that, the committee is developed by the first quarter, right? Those two separate things.
It's quarter during-
One moment. Attendance failure policy, page, page, under section C, attendance failure policy, paragraph one, paragraph two, current attendance policy will be eliminated. Shall form, Gloucester High School shall form a policy, operational committee to develop trauma-informed engagement protocols to improve attendance and chronic absence for implementation by the end of the first quarter of the 2023 school year for inclusion. You, that is, it, it is, it is two things that are combined there.
Right.
That the, the policy is going, the committee will meet this summer. And they are going to develop, there, there are multiple things happening that, that may involve, you know, all of the protocols and procedures we were talking about. Those would be implemented by the end of the first quarter, because if something is approved, you know, August 12th for handbooks, the likelihood of being able to put that immediately into action for the first day of school wouldn't leave enough time to do that. So those changes to be ready by the end of the quarter, to take effect by the quarter, include the, the attendance failure policy.
So it was the same time, right?
It's, it's all. It's attendance failure policy. And the operational protocols and procedures will be implemented. They're going to plan this somewhere.
So it's that same language of time?
So it's, it's contained in that.
Yeah. What she's saying is, we said end of the first term. This is end of the first quarter.
I just, I just think it should-
Yeah, semester is, is two terms, quarter and sem- and term are-
Same.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we should use one or the other.
Okay. Oh, for, oh, that's, sorry. Do we use term elsewhere? Because I-
No, no. So you're saying term, quarter, sometimes.
Yeah. Okay. So let's use quarter. Quarters are already in there. What we would be doing then is, though they're contained in the same paragraph, it's not, it-
We can say it twice.
You, you could make it more explicit. It's contained in the directive to, to, to change by that.
Essentially, what we did was, we, we, it was already in there for the timeline, for the, for the attendance failure policy. Because it, it, it-
Right.
It was a whole, whole paragraph.
Yeah.
So we can wait.
So we just leave it there.
And I just take, okay.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's contained as it is.
It's already embedded in there.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Okay. All right. So do we have a motion to approve file J E dash E?
Do we need to waive the first reading? I mean, waive the, actually?
Oh, well, this is procedures. Yeah, we should waive the reading because this was part of what we waived for the first time. We then separated it.
I move we waive the reading, policy J E.
Second. Melissa?
I just want to clarify. Are we calling this a policy?
We're calling, I think it should say attendance procedure.
Thank you.
I O J E.
Sure. So the top gets changed to procedure.
That's one.
To be clear. Or attendance policy.
Do we need to give another motion? No, I got it.
Okay. We may vote.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes. Excellent work, everybody that was involved.
So we just wait.
Right. So I move that we accept attendance procedure, don't even accept this to-
Approve.
Approve, right. So I move that we approve attendance procedure J E.
Another discussion? Okay. Roll bubble, please.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Jefferson, Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Excellent work all around. For a long time, I know. It's been a lot of very thoughtful work.
So it's no amendments, right?
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Amy, Cam. She's, she is, I believe she's listening.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Cam.
Okay.
And James Cook.
And James Cook.
Time as well.
And, yeah, I'm sure. Yes. Okay. So we have a request for an out-of-state field trip that just popped up that Greg is going to explain, and I would, hopefully would be to discuss and approve if we are comfortable approving this, because timing is of the essence. And just received it. Okay. And it's in your email. As of six tonight. So you want to explain?
Sure. This is, came in very recently because the logistics, I, I don't need to go into too much detail, but the, our biology teacher, Eric Lee, was extremely persistent in making this happen. And that involved working with the organization that worked with the schools and our students for two and a half weeks. Got a grant from the Department of Defense to, to do a, if there's a, a description in very small type down at the bottom of the first, first page. Students completed a two and a half week advanced study in regenerative cell culture. And were, were the winning group of all the biology classes. They presented in front of industry experts from Gloucester Genomics Institute, and ARMY, which is the acronym for the organization that received the grant from DOD. And they were selected as winners. So a, this program, it worked with all of our students to explore regenerative cell culture. I'll give an example of it very briefly. Students were, had to learn a lot about the, the technology, and then had to dream up and design their own product that would use this kind of cell cultures. For example, to grow your own, I'm sharing this because it was really cool stuff that was happening at the high school recently. To grow tissue in an artificial, you know, in a, in a cultured, cultured tissue that could be used for skin grafting, for example. That's one of the technologies. So students learned all about the connections between the science and industry and bringing a product to market and that whole cycle. And they then had to do a pitch in front of industry experts. So groups of students dreamed up their product, researched it, researched the viability, did some marketing around it, and then presented it. The winners here at the school were promised a trip to go to Manchester, New Hampshire, to go to the life science labs at the University of New Hampshire. And also the, the, it's called the ARMY. That's where they, they work in conjunction with them. This, they, it's only for five students, two teachers. And the Department of Defense grant is providing the, providing the funding for the transportation to go there. It just came in, it would be, in my opinion, a real shame to disappoint the students who have worked really hard. And it's just, they just completed this project. So it's, it's hot off the presses.
Questions? Seeing that, something is an awesome opportunity.
Great. I'll let them know. Thank you.
Okay. So we shall vote, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, we need to make a motion to-
A motion to approve the field trip, this particular group to facility in Manchester, New Hampshire.
Second.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Jefferson, Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So we move on to other business discussion, East Coast of Veterans Memorial School Building Committee meeting, committee update.
Much news there I can think of.
We have a meeting tomorrow at five, regular monthly building committee meeting. The project manager has been sending out notices when there's been extended work, just like they've been doing. So I think there's another one coming up next week, it's Monday, maybe.
And these are the concrete pores for the concrete floor are leveled, like all the second floors. You know, and, and, and this will be fifth one. They all always happen, they sort of all day long. Advanced warning, and there hasn't been any concerns voiced to the project to, about what may- I have another building thing to, just to keep it updated on. Just good news.
This is other business. Go back.
So I learned today that the modules of BIM will also be redone, refurbished this, this summer. I was sort of touch and go on it, really thought it wasn't going to happen. And what's a part of that-
You mean BIM?
What did I say?
You said BIM.
Sorry. BIM and BOM will both be done. Okay. So we, we thought, we thought for a while just to be BIM. And so B and F, I'll give a more of an update on just all the, we have like nicely laid out detail of what will be happening. We did visits, we mean, the project managers, Paul Russo, the custodial supervisor, and then each, you know, had custodial each building, plus, plus myself, did walk through some of the classrooms to understand exactly what need to be packed up, moved away from the walls, because of things. So we can give, so we can give the teachers instructions before they go. The good news for, for everyone is that rooms not having packed up and charred down just from some exterior lost their work. I'll give, I'll give you just a full update of my next report on what's happening at each school. It's going to make it's quite a better experience. Make sure that envelope is hung on.
Will that update when we get it, the ground updates?
Yeah, yeah, we can talk to that as well.
Our next, so I just want to put it out there that we're thinking of the possibility of having our August, first August meeting on August 3rd instead of the 10th. Because the superintendent made you back on that, for that meeting. So we can talk about that next time. Just have it in your head that, and it will have been a break from, you know, a whole month or two. So we will move that meeting up just one week, and then we have a few weeks in between. So we can talk about that. It's not set in stone. All right. I think we're done if anybody wants to.
I move that we adjourn. Right. Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Jefferson, Glancy?
Yes.
Mr. Melvin?
Yes.
Mr. Minio?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.